I can't even look at the toilet.
How did you point my passport, how did you point my passport? How did you give my passport? What do you, what do you think?
Stop playing, stop playing. What? 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 Why don't you have more Snapchat accounts, bro? I'm not even mad at you, bro. I'm not even mad at you, bro. Oh, oh.
She's cooking. Laura Thomas slips now.
What?
Laura Thomas slips now.
What?
Laura Thomas slips.
I just, I just have some ideas.
Hey, did I tell you not to interfere with me?
Oh.
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 Oh, you can just.
It's not about the grocery here.
He said grocery.
Grocery here.
Oh.
There's not anything about you, she was scared.
No.
Yeah.
I just.
Oh, my.
It's happening.
Hey.
What's up?
What's happening?
So, which? How are you doing?
What's going on with you?
I don't know. You're going to be fine. You heard that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Where is the next stuff? What's up, girl?
Hey, what up? How you doing here?
Wow.
It's raining right here. It's still a string of.
Okay, go up here, give our real one. Give our real, Mr. Mitchell one.
Oh, that's all right. It was too late. I figured, that's fine.
Okay. How y'all doing? Hello, hello? Hello, hello?
I got you.
I guess I was supposed to go.
I'll be starting my, um, my second session right before the third session.
What's up? Hey, man, what up? I don't know yet. What? Hey. Man. Oh, that's the fighter suit. All right, so, fight day, okay. All right, hey, now.
The time is now five oh three and I hereby call this finance committee of the Flint City Council to order. Roll call, man and clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mishap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeifer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. You have four members present?
We have four members present. We are, will wait to establish quorum. Okay, Lydell's in now.
Hello.
How are you?
Fine. Madam Clerk, could we please establish quorum? Just one moment. Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mishap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Present.
Mr. Jared is not in. You have six members present?
We have six members present. The OMA details the statutory requirements for individuals wishing to speak before a public body. A public body must allow a person to address a meeting of a public body under rules established and recorded by the public body. Rule twenty-nine point eight of the Flint City Council rules, any person at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any council member for failure to be germane, for vulgarity, or for speaking in excess of the allotted time, or any other violation of these rules. Rule twenty-nine point nine, any person who is called to order shall yield the floor until the chair shall have determined whether he or she is in order. If a person is determined to be out of order, that person must yield the floor and forfeit any remaining time. The reading of Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code section thirty-one-ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any agenda changes or additions?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Actually, I do have one, um, add-on, but I need to print it. I just, uh.
There's an add-on?
Yes, so.
Do we have a?
I'm going to print copies now, sorry. I'll tell you what it is, though, just one moment. It is a resolution authorizing funding for demolition and people services for the Atherton East Choice Neighborhood Project. And it is to increase the contract in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-two cents for a revised total contract amount of five million, three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
And we're meeting.
Three hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. I'm gonna print the copies now.
Okay, thank you. Without objection, I'll order that at the end of the agenda. It is now time for, I also want to remind people that according to our council rules, all silent, all cell phones should be on silent. Thank you. Um, it's now time for public comment. Who is our first, first public speaker, man and clerk?
First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
R.L. Hello, hello, hello. I'm R.L. Mitchell, living ward, the third ward, over there by the graveyard, seven fifty-nine East Linden Avenue. Uh, for the record, uh, a state about this situation at MTA with that hostile situation they got every morning. Uh, first of all, welcome back from the vacation, everybody, cause school, they started early in August, all, every time, but the ones who didn't get drowned at Snake River, wherever they're in Texas and all, and kids getting drowned, but the mother and father got saved and stuff that you wonder why God saved the, I mean, killed the kids. But that's for another reason for you people to figure it out. But I wanna say, the M, the MTA gotta be dealt with and dealt with right away because they be checking peoples with grocery bags. They call it the, they said, don't get on my bus with that S-word. I mean, otherwise, uh, that doo-doo. The, the boy had, he about thirty-five years old, and he had eight grocery bags at Kroger's on south, on North Second Street. And, and she was looking at me like, and the boy didn't get on the bus with the groceries. He had groceries. A big black guy, he got, just got in the high rise, and he need, I went to two counties, Beecher and Mount Morris, and when he got you to stop, she, what she gonna do, sir? That you gonna pay? Already paid once, and she gonna, the black, I had to go pay her twice. And then the same thing happened this morning. It's a little dude about twenty-three years old, had a, a big TV, and a robot talking about what's in the box, sir? And the boy didn't know. And then they stopped at McDonald's on Cloud Road, about eight of them, the one who got mistreated by the MTA, sit up there, what they gonna? And he better be dealing with them peoples real quick, cause they look like they just come from the Middle East. He look black, but they talking all kind of mumble jumble stuff, what they gonna do, to keep people treating them like that. But anyway, what, I see the first ward ain't, ain't here, ain't here in the third, and, and, and matter of fact, when I went to McDonald's, they said, hey, Mr., what, you all right? I said, I don't know yet. He said, who won? I said, and the dude got upset and ran out the door, he said, who won the council seat, third ward? And he got so mad, he goes, I went, because, uh, when I come here, yes, last night, I was escorted, and then they said, you some special code, don't be answering the people's, and matter of fact, talking about the, the city clerk signed my name, but, and, and now you people look like nothing, ain't never happened. And Ty's hand looking over there, looking like Donald Trump. You mess with him, you gonna get dealt with, and drunk, I mean, Trump ain't no joke, like Churchill, and all that junk, and stay tuned, America, and we gonna see what happen tonight.
Yes, R.L. Next public speaker.
The next speaker is Deborah Coleman.
My name is Deborah Coleman. I have lived on the north side all my fifty-eight years. I live in the first ward. I was downtown this past weekend staying at the Hilton for the fortieth all-citywide class reunion with my best friend from Tennessee and several others. I was involved in a serious disturbing traumatizing experience with, experience with two evil rogue and professional aggressive violent demon cops. In a nutshell, it was gross police conduct. I am speaking my piece because this has to stop with these two officers. I am traumatized. I'm nervous. I'm not scared, but I'm scared of what they are allowed to do to people with the city officials on their side. What they did to us was unlawful abuse of power. They falsify information, they are terrorizers, and it's scary, and now that I put that video out, it makes me more nervous that if they ever see me on the streets, they will harass me. They need to be held accountable for their actions. They are abusing their power. We were not a threat. They need to be investigated and fired and not be able to be a police anywhere because they are dangerous, they ready to pop off, and they're ready to kill someone. They're gonna cost the city of Flint Police a lot of money. Flint City needs to start doing deep evaluation on their cops instead of what, hiring who they know that's gonna go out there and just do bad things, cause I just feel like they didn't look off into that, uh, Terry Van Buren dude, he got a lot of stuff going on with him in the past. So I don't know if they looked at his record or not before they hired him. And, um, Police Chief Green, Mayor Stanley, they got the authority to stand up to those, to the two demons, but they can just continue to support them, and as long as they continue to support them, they're gonna keep coming out there terrorizing us melanin people. And I hope they do what is right. Right is right, wrong is wrong, no matter your status. And, um, I don't be knowing what y'all be doing up on here in this council, but y'all don't need to send them no more money. Y'all need to send them money to get the correct, uh, type of police that's gonna take care of us, not terrorize us. You only use force on people that need force to be used on them. Them some upstanding citizens right there. They jumped out and took that young man to jail for nothing. And I know y'all seen that video, and everybody needs to quit asking what happened before, nothing happened before. They just jumped out and did what they wanted to do because they could, and nobody standing.
The next speaker is Marcia Talbert.
Hey, council. Um, my name is Marcia A. Talbert. I am a resident of, a former resident of Bautina, California. I now live in Temple City, California, but I have been following Flint politics for the last four to five years, about, about five years. Um, I am triggered by what is going on in the city of Flint, and I came here because I support Beverly Bigsley being in her campaign to fill the third ward council seat because no one is more deserving of that seat than her. I walked, I knocked doors, I did what I could to support Ms. Bev, and I still support her to this day. We are in the process of challenging, and that is, there's more to come on that. What I see as a problem, that there are so many people in the city of Flint who have the same handwriting. When I tell you that there were tens of ballots that the signatures looked exactly the same, you all watched the count. Watch the count, keep track of how many ballots they said were write-ins versus how many were duplicates or the same person. And that needs to happen quickly, okay? I could have never imagined that I would come to a city as large as Flint, Michigan is, I parallel this because I was raised in a steel town in Pennsylvania. I know what it's like to have one employer that employs seventy percent of the people, and everything goes down when the place shuts down or moves or what have you. But to have someone come in and try to take over a ward that is, or represent a ward, I should say, that is in dire need of resources and, um, assistance and just overall help, the third ward doesn't even know. The people I spoke to, they don't even know what's going on in the city. They had questions about the ARPA money, which, hey, we'll never know how much is really left, right? Since we haven't looked at it since September. They have questions about the water settlement funds. They have questions about someone pulling a gun out in the, uh, chambers, but they didn't, you know, they didn't know that prior to the gun being brought out, that there was a whole riot brought on by Lydell. So that part needs to be addressed. I know that one thing that I can say for certain is that no one who comes in third and loses by three points can win by ninety-seven as a write-in. Absolutely no way. Watch the vote.
The next speaker is Stanley Wood.
Wow, how do you?
Wow, how do you follow that up? Um, so I'm gonna change my things around a little bit because, uh, I got three times to speak tonight. February 4th, 2022, who remembers that date? That was a really important date here in the City of Flint. That's when the integrity of the Flint City Police Department went to hell. That was when Colin Burney died in a car accident. There is no integrity anymore. In my humble opinion, I think Chief Green is a waste of human sperm. That's just my opinion, okay? This guy has let the same officers get away with stuff over and over and over. Later, I'm gonna cover a little bit on corruption. I know a lot of you think that corruption is about money. It isn't just about money, it's other things, but we'll cover that probably in the next speaking section. Uh, I finally made it through the book, the charter. I've come up with 22 charter violations since 2021. 22 of them. Out of those 22, nine of them are multiple violations of three or more, okay? Of course, nothing gets done because we don't have an E and A board that'll meet regularly and hold the, the council feet to the fire. Um, I don't want to speak too much on, uh, the police brutality because I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of other people speaking on this. But I ain't never heard of assault and battery with barbecue tongs. And then I ain't never heard the police go back and get the weapon. How do they know which set of tongs it was? They just, oh, there's a bucket of them, let's take this one. That looks like the one he assaulted us with. That kid could have whooped their ass. That kid is a hell of a boxer. He could have whooped them. But what'd he do? Put his hands up. Why? I'm gonna tell you, because he's black. He knows what's gonna happen. He had to put his hands up in the air. And then look how they treated him. And then Officer Wells comes out with a fire extinguisher-sized mace spray? Sprays the people, sprays the food so that way you got, can't sell the rest of his food. I think I'm gonna stop right now. I'm pretty pissed right now and I don't want to get kicked out.
Next public speaker.
The next speaker is Leon Lawson II.
Hello, Council. So I'm coming here today as a-
Please speak closer to the mic. There's so much noise, it's hard to hear. Thank you.
I'm coming here today as a, uh, first off, as a concerned father. Um, I'm an active father to all my children. Um, managed to keep my son out of trouble all these years, always active. Um, you know, what happened to us this weekend, uh, downtown Flint was something I could never think of, never imagine. Um, we were assaulted, as you seen, you know, I'm sure all of you seen or, you know, the, the video that's going around. But, um, the way that we were treated downtown, uh, the officers that were involved are dangerous to the public, period, you know? Um, they dangerous to the public. So with that being said, um, what's gonna be done? You know? We got, we gotta stand on this. We can't let this go under the rug. We can't let this fly. Um, they tried to put a felony on my son. Um, I've managed to keep him out of trouble all these years and I, I, I plan on keep doing so, you know? Um, they tried to put a felony on, felony on him saying that, uh, he has tried to assault him with a weapon that was in a bucket, you know, well after they put, placed him in handcuffs and put in the car, you know? Um, said that, uh, he tried to burn him with a pair of tongs. That, that the off, I watched the officer come up and grab it out of the bucket near the grill. You know, this is a family business. You know, we, we in the business of putting smiles on faces. You know, it was a great time. They came out there and escalated that situation, not de-escalated. I had, we had, we had permission to finish serving the customers that was there from the officers that did this assault. You know, uh, Terry Van Kuren is his name. That's one, that's one of them. And the other one is, uh, which officer? That is, uh, Officer Boswick. So Terry Van Kuren and Officer Boswick is, 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 is dangerous to this, to this city and to this public, you know? And for you to lie and try to put charges on my son, what have you done in your past? What kind of charges you don't put, false charges you don't put on other black youth in this community? You know? That just reminds me of a guy that'll put dope on, on the guy and have him fighting for his life. And if we didn't have the connections that we have in this city and the people we could call, you know, we would have been in, in serious trouble. Or, or the video that surfaced, we might still be fighting for our life if the video didn't surface. Thanks to Deborah, we really appreciate you, Deborah, for standing on business. You know, in, in this situation, I, I found out who was with us and who wasn't. You know, people smile on your face, they act like they with you, but they really ain't. I found that out. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sheri McFadden.
Hello, I'm Sheri Smith McFadden. And I would just want to make sure that everybody knew about our picnic. Oak Park Brothers and Sisters is having their annual picnic, August the 16th, from 12 to 7. And also, one more thing I wanted to speak on is, um, I can't get a hold of Mr. Alameen. And I've been trying to work with him about getting his house boarded up. Next door to me, it's on the corner of Kniff in Miami Lane. They already set it on fire once and me and my husband had to run out the house in the middle of the night. And they, my cars and everything. I just want to see can y'all at least get out there and board it up. The address is 4816 Miami. I would really appreciate that. We have a park at that corner. And I keep telling them that the kids, ain't no doors on the house. I done brought this up several times. Kids going in and out of there playing. It's all type of debris they dumping over there. I would just like for somebody at least come out and board it up. 4816 Miami Lane. Thank you.
The next speaker is John McFadden.
Uh, good evening, Council. I would like to thank you guys for your renovation and the saving of Oak Park.
Can I, hold, hold this time? We cannot hear. Thank you, go ahead.
I would like to, uh, thank you for the saving of the space there at Oak Park right there that you guys, uh, blessed us with right there. I want to give a special thanks out to Ms. Tanya and all your help and support and making that right there happen. But on a more serious note, I would like to speak to you guys about accountability and leadership. Seem like to me Flint been going down the last 50 years, ever since General Motors started going out. And it's about the leadership that we've been having down here that's leading this city. I don't know if you guys know it or not. Flint used to be one of the richest cities in the nation. Everybody wanted to come to Flint. Now look at this. Bad leadership got us right here where we at right here today. And we need to change. All this arguing, bickering with one another need to stop. We need to come together and do the good for the people, not just ourselves. You know, we got a lot of y'all, they won't even look at us when we sitting here trying to talk to y'all about the serious things that we have going on in this city. And y'all don't even want to listen. It seem like it's easy for the police to go jump on somebody that's trying to do something easy. Just look at the last few incidents, that peaceful demonstration they showed out on us. And then when you called them for assistance, numerous times, won't show. They're coming to take a report because somebody them got shot, killed, injured. That type of stuff need to stop immediately. I don't know what Chief Green need to up and have a, a better department or if we need a new chief. I don't know. But we need to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lorraine Thompson, I'm assuming, or Thompson.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Thompson. What I'm, uh, I guess where I want to start, I got so many things to say. So many things to say. Why is everybody around in this city moving so punitively? Why are you punishing us? You know, and, and, and when I hear Flint strong and we're so resilient, what I hear is that we the dog walked you and you still here. That's crazy. So punitive. I don't know what you trying to make us do. That's, uh, Farrakhan. What are you trying to make us do? But what I know is people that's so punitive, they have no people skills. They don't know how to function within and, and take care of the people. It's a shame and a disgrace when you over the people when they voted you into a position, when you been placed in a position and you just dog walk the people all day long. That is crazy. But let me go with my family. How dare you put me in a position where I have to watch my brother? See, he can't even protect his son. Can't protect his son? And they sitting in here with us now? How dare you? How dare you? Trying to put, and because, and how much time I got? And because people, oh, he got it all today? Because people know, uh, because we know people.
Please be respectful.
Because we know people. And because our family is known. I'm scared to know how many people who don't have nobody to talk for them, who can't get a manly or whoever they need to get to get them out of position. How dare y'all, that, what may say the least of these? Y'all don't take care of the least of these. Y'all don't want to work with us. Y'all don't, y'all don't want that, oh, let me say this before my time is up. Look, if the, if they're not giving you the information you need, if you don't, uh, uh, if you don't get stuff on time to be able to, don't, don't vote on it. Nothing, nothing moves until the things are worked in the way it should be. I really wanted to say that. How can you make a decision on something when you don't have the information?
The next speaker is Keelani Copany.
My name is Keelani Copany and I just turned 13 years old. Normally, I would be going over the basic kindergarten rules, but today I'm going to quote something Tupac said, something that is still relevant today, especially in Flint. Thug life, T-H-U-G-L-I-F-E. The hate you give little infants fucks everybody. When kids grow up in broken systems with unsafe water, non-stop violence, poverty, failing leadership, and feeling ignored, it doesn't just hurt us, it comes back to hurt everyone around us, you included. Because what we put into the lives of young people shapes who we become. If we grow up feeling like no one cares, like our lives don't matter to you, don't be surprised when we grow up to be menaces to society. Flint youth has been through hell. We've had to fight for clean water, safe neighborhoods, good schools, the chance to just be kids and the opportunity to be able to grow up. That's not fair to us. We are not the problem. What is happening in this community is just the consequences of what happens when you fail to nurture the kids. It takes a village to raise a child and it's, and it's time everyone in leadership steps up to be the village. And not just for, and not just for the 100 or so youth that got jobs through the summer jobs programs, not just the youth that smiles for photos and pretends like everything is sunshine and rainbows in Flint, but be a village for all the kids here. So I'm asking you, please listen to us, see us, fight for us. We want, we want to grow up to be Flint strong, not just because we survived on our own, but because we are supported by a village that had our back.
The next speaker is Mari Copany.
The youth have spoken and we are listening. Posted by Lydell Lewis on Facebook last week. I guess council members 1st, 2nd, 4th, and 7th have very selective hearing. You can't say you are listening to the youth, but then sit up there week after week rolling your eyes, looking down at your phone and ignoring the youth that are right here in these chambers. Listening to the youth means listening to all youth voices that come to the table, not just the ones who recite exactly what you want to hear and follow your agenda. You also need to listen to youth like me that bring real issues directly to you. Every single meeting, I share experience of living right here in Flint. And every single meeting, it feels like it falls on deaf ears. Not once have you responded to a single thing I have said. Minus the person from the 4th Ward that used time, used the time she could have responded to my issues, but instead she chose to scold me for calling her by her name. Judy, 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 Judy. Hey, Judy? Thanks to Councilman Pfeiffer for bringing it to my attention that Flint is now the number one leading state in homicide rate per capita as of 2024. But it doesn't take that statistic to know that crime is out of control in the city. Police response time is horrible when you call 911. It almost took an entire week for the mayor to put on a press conference to, to address the wave of violence. Last week, a 14-year-old child was murdered. We need more proactive policing, including responding to calls faster, community policing, and increasing patrols in areas that are known for trouble. We don't need to see another video of the chief's special team harassing and macing citizens on this, on the street downtown Flint. Adding yet another incident of misbehavior by the police. Can you guys get your things together? And no offense, but stop acting like you are the short bus. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shante Murchison.
Good evening, Flint residents, our council. We're back here again for another council meeting. Um, before I get to what I really want to say, I really want to address Lydell tonight. I'd appreciate if you look at me, but it's okay if you don't because I know that you hear me. Um, one of the last meetings that you did, I think before you all went into your break, you caught my attention with something you said. And I wasn't here, but I watched it and I didn't appreciate it because you're the main person always speaking on being respectful. You always talking about not bullying people. You always talking about other council members respecting each other. But it was one day where Pfeiffer, Burns, and JWC weren't here. And you came for Mr. Jarrett, who was the only one here who had some backbone, to come and to vote down whatever it was that you all were trying to pass. I appreciate for the few little seconds I had your attention. You went on to tell him, as you disrespected him multiple times, while trying to put pressure on him to vote, under your breath, that what he said didn't matter anyway after you wanted him to vote for something that would help benefit whatever you wanted to do. That's not okay. That's not cool at all. But you telling these kids and everybody else to respect you, but you can't give the respect to the people you work with. Help, that makes sense. It makes none at all. You wrong for that. And maybe many people ain't told you how disrespectful you are, but I'm here to tell you. I ain't got nothing to hide from you. You wrong. I want to give Jarrett his flowers for standing up, for staying, sticking by what he was gonna do, voting how he was gonna vote, and you- and you not bullying him, and then going to social media to further to try to humiliate him. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. We need more council members with backbone, like Jarrett Pfeiffer, Burns, and JWC, who actually gonna stand up and be here and do something for the people. And why has Leon not yet resigned? I don't understand. Why is the same officer who was here when Shalita and Josh got arrested back here in the back now? He is a repetitive abuser. He has done this multiple times. He shouldn't be here no more. He just pepper sprayed a bunch of people in the face at the Nor, at the, the Northern Tailgate Party. That's not okay, and he back up in here to harass some more people? So are y'all really trying to hear the people, or is the idea to make us scared?
RL.
Because I don't understand it. It's wrong, it's not okay, the disrespect is wrong, that's not okay. And Leon needs to resign. Because abuse on any person is not okay. He ain't got no business ever putting his hands on a female. And sitting on his council seat, he need to go.
The next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Jones, and welcome back, everyone. I'm here because, obviously, don't nobody know why I'm here, mainly Ms. Liddell. Obviously, you quoted, and you posted on your Facebook page, Tanya Jones of Flint Township. I'm Tanya Jones, De Michaels Edwards' mother. That's suffering with the opium crisis. That's who I am. I'm Tanya Jones, that you're right in, walked in on the bathroom on me and assaulted me. That I have a court date on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, the same time I have a court date because of John Cole concerning my son. At the same time, I have one court date at eight-thirty, and I have another one at nine, and I'm gonna be there. Because at the end of the day, it's not about politics, it's not about religion, it's about God. And obviously, y'all quote God and all these scriptures and prayers before you do it. You can't believe in God. And the thing is, I'm not going nowhere. I love Flint. No matter, can't, nobody become mayor or nothing to leave away from Flint. Flint is everything, we are Flint, the people is Flint strong. You guys don't make Flint. And it's bad that y'all don't listen. Y'all do not listen, it's a cry out, you, 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 you tore down a house, a house. It's a cold, it's, it's, it's a process of tearing down a house. And guess what, you didn't follow it. The house behind is sixteen fifty-five Ohio, still needed to be taken care of, Judy. That's your ward. You don't address it, I'm gonna address it. So I'm watching everything. I'm not going nowhere. There, I don't care what you do, I don't know where my son, I have a missing person report right now on my son. But guess what? My son was a vessel, he got me out here, not just for him, for other kids that's going through what he's going through. The opium crisis is real. It's real. And it's not going nowhere. Y'all gonna take money, give it to Leon, y'all gonna put it, take the, with all the other, AIP, all this money, this money, y'all, that's your main concern is the money, it's not the people. And it is sad. I don't know nothing else about this politics, but I'm gonna learn. And it's sad, cause y'all don't care. Y'all mace the whole group of people. Y'all do the stuff to the people in the council. Like y'all just above the law, like it's purged. I call it purged, I call it Flint purged, I call it Ne, I call Neely's Circus, and I post it all the time. And yet I seen everything, everything you, just like you watch me, I'm watching you. But guess what, God watching all of us, and he got the last word. Be blessed.
The next speaker is Doug Matthews.
Hello, everyone. My name is Doug Matthews. I'm a veteran and a good government advocate from the Seventh Ward. Today, I proclaim good news. LaShawn Johnson ran a focused, grounded, community-driven campaign. And last night, the voters of the Third Ward gave her a decisive write-in victory. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens because people are paying attention. And what they saw in LaShawn was someone who listens, follows through, and gets the work done. Let's be clear. This wasn't just a win, it was a rout. A candidate the snakebite crowd dismissed, a working-class woman with no big donors and no outside agitators, overcame every obstacle they put in front of her, and came out on top. You don't just beat your opponent like that, you bury them. And let's remember who lined up against her.
Excuse me.
Tanya Burns, self-styled kingmaker of the Sixth Ward.
Doug, Doug, Mr. Matthews. Whoever is playing that, turn it down. Turn it off. Be respectful to everyone inside this room. Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
Self-styled kingmaker from the Sixth Ward has now backed three losing candidates in a row. Jan Marie Arbor, Keonan Carol McIntosh, and now Beverly Bigsleazy. That's not strategy, that's a losing streak. While they were prematurely popping campaign corks in their YouTube echo chambers, convinced that Bigsleazy would waltz onto council and help the Snakebite Four burn the rules, as Pfeiffer so eloquently put it, the voters of the Third Ward had other ideas. They chose civility over chaos, progress over obstruction, truth over smear. And now, instead of offering a simple congratulations, some of LaShawn's eight, ten news media opponents are spinning wild conspiracy, attacking voters, and insulting the process. That's not oversight, it's sour grapes. In a democracy, when you lose, you concede. You don't smear the public for daring to choose someone better. LaShawn didn't just defeat a rival, she defeated a worldview. The idea that rages leadership, that bullying is power, and that lies shouted loud enough become the truth. So tonight, I say to the voters of the Third Ward, thank you. You chose well, you sent a message, and you gave this city a real chance to continue the progress which we are already about. We're proud of you, now do the job.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Rich Jones.
How y'all doing today? First of all, I wanna, I wanna say that before Eric May's passed, he had eight hundred or more request forms for them Harper Funds. And I'm quite sure at least six of them was, six hundred of them was for roof repairs. So y'all seventy-two is a long way short from achieving that goal and doing something for the residents of Flint. Now, one thing about that incident that happened on Saturday that really got me disturbing is the fact that the officer did not have on any body cam. And it's supposed to be an ordinance, a law, or something that everybody that walked these streets, fires patrolling us, should have on a body cam. And an officer that displays that kind of behavior definitely needs to have a body cam on. Thank God that there was civilians there that pulled their phone out and recorded it, because it could have been their word against his word. And you already see what his word is. Now, as far as, far as, y'all can correct me on y'all time if y'all want to, but my understanding was this incident took place around two o'clock in the morning? All that police attention needed to be up on North Saginaw. You know, by Avenue Way at that gas station where people keep getting killed at? We really need to concentrate on cooling these hotspots down in the city of Flint. And it's, it is what it is. They did what they did. It's, it's out there, there's, the receipts is clear. Please do what you can by calling a town hall, a special meeting, because this kind of behavior between a citizen and our police force cannot increase, it got to decrease now. And y'all got the power, and y'all can do it, so thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
What's up? Hey, uh, let me start off by congratulating, uh, Sergeant Davina Donahue. Job well done, Flint was the first, uh, Flint was the first to send the numbers in for the first time in I don't know how long. Let me say this, uh, I'm not putting my hands up in the air if I haven't done anything and a police officer's pulling me, uh, push up to me. I'm not driving ten-two while sitting in the car if the police pull me over. Y'all know I don't give a damn about what I say, and I'm gonna say it here. Police officers, officers, they originated during slavery, slave patrol. Every time I see one misuse and abuse their authority, I feel like they think that I'm a slave. I'm gonna beat they ass, that's what I'm gonna do. I am not my ancestors. I keep telling people this shit, man. I am not my ancestors. Liddell, Judy, Candace, Leon, y'all sit here every city council meeting with those same officers that was down there Saturday. Now it just spilled out on the street from y'all lawlessness. You weaponized them motherfuckers. You did, you did, and you did, Candace. Y'all never told them, y'all allowed them to come up in here. Still will, I still want my lick back. When, when I see, I'm letting you know, I don't care what you think it is, a threat or whatever, I get triggered when I see this shit. I have PTSD, I'm a disabled veteran, and this is one of the things that triggers me. I don't have any problems with police officers, but what I do have issues with is abuse of police officers that take advantage of a bag. What they were with, punks in high school, they got bullied, they got they ass whooped, and what happened, they got a badge and a gun, and now they run as a gang, and they think they somebody, but they ain't shit. I'm letting you know right now. God is my witness. I'm not putting my hands up, I'm not going ten-two, I'm not doing any of that. If you pull me over for a reason, I will, I will oblige you. But if you doing what you did Saturday night, when did two o'clock become a curfew for adults to have to get off the street? When did they, when was an ordinance passed for them to have to stop cooking? They don't have to get off the damn street. What it is, is the white people downtown who called the black people hooligans. And they don't want black people downtown. And you can kiss my ass because I'm coming every day.
The next, the next speaker is Audrey Muhammad.
Audrey Muhammad, Second Ward. First of all, I would like to start out by saying to the McFatons, that house is still located in the Second Ward until the new election come up for the First Ward. So you should, you should be talking to both First Ward and Second Ward, cause it's located on Kniff. I know the boundaries, still Second Ward. So make sure you talk to both First and Second Ward about what's going on over there. You know, we talk about the police brutality. I remember a young man by the name of Willie Taylor, William Taylor, that got killed back about forty-some years ago. He was fifteen years old, with, they accused him of an attempt to breaking into an apartment. I remember, he was fifteen, cause I remember, I was about fifteen at the time. So it happened about nineteen eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, happened over there in that Selby Hood area, I believe it was. Look him up. I just looked him up and showed it to them back there. But I remember that incident. So this that's happening right now on our youth ain't new. I remember in two thousand and one, my sister and I was attacked at a park by Flint City Police, where the police officer looked at her and told her, you think you Billy Badass? And told her, she was gonna whoop my sister. So she jumped my sister, but in turn, she got beat. And the only way that they got away with it was that the officer that was with her, who was arresting me, and ended up spraying mace in several people's faces. And then they went to court and lied. But then told the truth and said, well, I thought she was about to attack us. So my sister got charged with a misdemeanor because they knew she wasn't right. Thank God for Judge Crawford, who knew it was BS from the Police Department, when she should have got thirty days in jail, but she was only asked to serve three days because the jury says she was guilty. So thank God, but they broke her arm in the process. Look it up, two thousand and one, June, Audrey Young, Catherine Edwards. Look us up. Yeah, so you all, and I still know the officers, and one of them right now is serving as a detective over in the Police Department. He see me, and he just looked at me and watched me when I walked by, cause he ain't forgot my face. And nigga know what he did wrong. Yup, I called him that, cause that's what he is. And that's what y'all expect a lot on the Police Department, because you want people who come in our neighborhoods and attack us. We tired of it. That should have never happened to that young man the other day. And a police officer should never even be sitting, even behind a desk downstairs, and he causing all kinds of problems. And he always up here causing problems. I'll close with this. Liddell, you gotta stop trying to look at people like you trying to intimidate them, cause my granddaughter felt intimidated when you were staring at her the other day at that community program. And I'm sure you know who she is. But she looked at you, and you spoke to her, and she spoke back to you. You know who she is, cause y'all be watching my Facebook page, and I'm very public with who my grandchildren are. Thank you.
The next speaker is Leon Lawson III.
How y'all doing? My name is Leon Lawson III, and I can definitely say, like, I am, I'm underprepared, like, cause for the council meeting, but I can definitely say, when I came in here, I'm happy I came, cause when I came in here, I did it.
Sir, we cannot hear you.
When I had, when I had, right, when I had came in here, I was, uh, like I said, I didn't know about the council meetings for like two hours ago, so I'm very underprepared for it. But when I had came in here, I looked around, and I seen that it was no youth in here at all, like my age, and we the main target, you know what I mean, when it comes to, you know, the type of stuff that he put the other day. And like, uh, so, I can tell you about the incident I went through for the past four days. I was kidnapped and assaulted for transparently no reason, like literally no reason at all. And, uh, he, the charges that he took me to jail under, he said I tried to burn it with some tongs. I'm a professional athlete, I box, this is what I do. If I really wanted to, if I really wanted to assault that man, I really, I really do this for a living, you know what I mean? And that goes to show that these police officers is doing nothing but hiding behind a badge. Behind, 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 hiding behind a badge, that's it, that's, that's it. Cause at the end of the day, you still human. And I, I really want them to know that, they not tough, none of that, they hiding behind a badge. And they, and they, and they, and they coming from Schwartz Creek, out of, out of these outskirts towns, coming into our city, acting like cowboys. It need to stop, and I'm not gonna lie, like, like I said, I'm underprepared, but I'm finna definitely start coming, speaking at these, this type of stuff, you know what I'm saying? Like, for sure, I'm, I'm finna start a trend with this. I spent, yeah, I, I spent almost three days in a, in a bull pen. It was a terrible experience, very, very, very unexpected. I didn't go outside trying to cause no trouble. I went outside trying to help my family. That's it, I went outside, went outside trying to help my family, that's it. And, man, it's simple. Thank y'all.
The, the final speaker for this meeting is Latrice King.
How y'all doing? I'm, uh, Theatric King. I take orders for all to smoke barbecue, Flint, and, uh, And, uh, the other night, we was treated very unfairly, very unjust. Um, it could've went a lot differently if the officer got out and had a conversation with the person who was running the business. You know what I mean? It, it didn't have to be, uh, uh, a hop out and I'm, I'm starting to spray people with mace and I'm starting to put people in handcuffs without having a conversation. You know, that's an emotional man. That's a, you're not a, you're not a man at that point. You, you moving off your emotions. You know what I mean? So... My bad, I'm a little shaken up from the other night. But like I said, you know, the other night, I seen him and I told him, uh, you know, you can take your badge off and we can do what we gonna do. You took your camera off. You come in here today, you acting like you tough and, and this and that. But me, I've been working out my whole life. You know, I'm from Flint. I'm not from no outskirts. I'm, I'm, I'm from here. You know what I mean? I don't have no felonies on my record. I'm, I'm clean. I'm, you know what I mean? So... So, yeah, you know, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. It is now time for council's response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Sir, anyone who'd like to do a response. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm gonna speak on one topic tonight, and it's about the police. As a white man, and I don't bring race into anything, I try not to, but as a white man, society tells me I have to back the police, back the blue, no matter what. Um, I can't do that. What I seen on Saturday and basically in the last six months, I think it's gotten really bad. We need, uh, sir, I know what we need. We need a new police chief. I've been saying it for a few years now. When you drive down the street and you see Blayt, Chief Green is in chair, in charge of the Blayt officers. So when there's Blayt, that's Chief Green. He's not doing his job. When you see the highest murder rate in Michigan and second in the country, that's Chief Green not doing his job. When it comes to the police officers, there are good cops and there are bad cops. And I will stand behind the good cops seven days a week. When there's bad cops, and I thank Prosecutor Layton for dismissing these charges. Because in, in those cops, those cops, and one of, one of them's back there now, they should be put on his Brady list. A Brady list is basically any cop that comes in with, with, uh, arrest on somebody, they get double scrutinized because they're corrupt cops. It's called a Brady list. Look it up. They need to be on it. Our colleagues complained about youth jobs, us not supporting youth jobs and, and putting youth to work to get them off the streets to stop crime. Well, these two gentlemen are youths, and they were pepper sprayed and thrown in jail for having a job. So make that make sense.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, to everyone here, thank you. I do want, for showing up. We only get two minutes to respond. You get more time to, to talk than we do to respond. I want to say, number one, I have a problem. We have a First Ward Councilman not here charged with a felony with domestic violence and a misdemeanor. That is a problem. That is a problem. Um, to you, Leon Senior and Leon the Third, I'm sorry that happened to you. I'm sorry. It shouldn't have happened to you. And as I told you when I talked with you, it was gonna play out. You was gonna do forty-eight hours. Two-twenty was your time. You were taken in. Two-twenty had stopped. Two days later, when the sheriff came in, they're using our jail as a political prison. No charges, and it needs to stop. There is nothing, you did a little shimmy shimmy. So what? You are a trained boxer. You could've, if you were angry, you would've threw the tongue, tongues down and used your fist. You didn't do that. Absolute, and when, when we-
Hey, please let her speak. Pause your time. Pause your time.
I need my seconds back, please.
Yes, I'm going to give you-
Thank you.
Go back to fifty-three, please.
It was fifty-four.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I looked up at fifty-three. Go ahead.
So when we say this, you, there was no disturbance. You don't have to disperse. There was no threat. There was no immediate danger. There wasn't a threat of a riot. You were black people barbecuing license on the side of Saginaw Street, and what we build up, they don't want us to enjoy. That was the problem, and it needs to change. I spoke one week before about people getting maced. On Monday, I spoke about it at the council. The crowd was maced again on Saturday. This is a problem. And Chief Green is not responding. He's not responding. I've emailed, I've called, I've text. He's not responding. And if he don't wanna respond, then Chief Green need to go. He need to quit. You can't have a black mayor, a black police chief, and the black people are being treated so poorly. This is crazy. This shouldn't have happened. Continue to show up, young man, please.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you. Um, first, I would like to thank all of the residents. Uh, thank you for being engaged in the process. You know, and I, I wanna, I wanna piggyback off of something that, um, my colleagues said, Councilman Pfeiffer and Councilwoman Burns. It's a disgrace. Here we are again, violating people's constitutional rights. Okay? On Saturday, Saturday night, early into Sunday morning, your rights were violated. Your right to assemble, it was violated. When are we gonna stop? You have white officers, white officers. That wasn't, you know what? That right there was racial. It was racial. I'm not gonna even sugarcoat it. It was racial. It was racially motivated. And then you're gonna turn around and spray people with pepper spray? Okay?
Please stop yelling out.
Spraying, spraying black residents? They shouldn't even be sitting up in here tonight. They shouldn't be. And then you got a mayor that hasn't even spoken out about it. You got a police chief that hasn't even spoken out about it.
Please stop yelling out.
I'm appalled. I am so over it. It's wrong. It's a disgrace.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I, I know the family. I have a good relationship with several members of the family. And currently, um, bring you to order. And so what we know is that they are a good family. I have, I'm not only speaking of, you know, coming in in the fourth quarter or what I've heard. I've bought food from the food truck. I patronize. So... Any, anywho, what it boils down to is this. Currently, we have a situation where we have our internal affairs, where they are actively investigating this. We have, and so you would know these things if you would get engaged and if you would have these conversations with administration. Because at the end of the day, this is not political. What this is right here, this is, we have an instance in our community, and we need to deal with it accordingly. And that's what we're trying to do. Because no one, no young person, no old person should feel shook when they're enjoying their community. We have a, we had a jazz festival that night. Many of our council people never attend those things, but I know, I, I often do. And so I send out a lot of invitation, the flyers on my page, inviting people to come out to things like that. I don't wanna invite people to come out to a place where people are getting sprayed or where it's not safe. So as we continue to do our part with engaging with administration, making sure this is being investigated with internal affairs, that's what we can do, what we're gonna do. So again, to the, um, Lawson family, I will continue to patronize, and I will continue to stand with you when you are right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else from the council would like to do a council response? Okay, seeing none. Go on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion on the floor from the con, from the Congresswoman, from the councilperson in the Seventh Ward to approve the consent agendas. There's support.
Support.
It's been supported by the Councilwoman in the Second Ward. Is there any separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, two-five-zero-one-seven-six. Okay? Okay? That's it for me.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
I would like to separate two-five-zero-one-seven-seven.
Okay.
And, hold up. I think I had another one. Let me see. I had a question about that one. Um... I think that might be, uh... It might be if for now.
Asking people to be, please be, um, keep your conversation down to a minimum. It's hard to hear up here, even if I'm sitting next door. Our clerks have to hear as well.
I think that's it for me right now.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Are there any other separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
I'd like to separate on page four, two-five-zero-two-one-eight.
Okay.
I would like to separate on page five, two-five-zero-two-two-three.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's all I have.
Are there any other separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, two-five-zero-two-four-zero. Um...
Okay.
And...
Once again, I'm asking that, our, that the members in attendance in the audience to please keep their voices down. It's very difficult to hear.
Two, on page three, two-five-zero-one-nine-eight.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I have.
Is there any others?
One-nine-eight.
Okay, the consent agenda will consist of the following resolutions. Two-five-zero-two-two-zero, Settlement Barton versus Neely, case number two-two, two-twenty thirty-two.
Madam Chair.
No, that one was separated.
Separated.
That was separated? I missed it. Okay, thank you. That's why it's important that we, people keep quiet.
Well, I would like to separate that.
It's our, it, Mr.-
Well, it should've been ours. It's on mine. It's separated.
It wasn't separated on mine. I missed it. Two-five-zero-two-two, the consent agenda consists of two-five-zero-two-two-one, Grant Agreement, Flint Township, Multi-Jurisdictional Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, Flint Police Department. Two-five-zero-two-two-two, Contract Anytime Restoration, SVS, Residential Roofing Replacement Repair Program. Two-five-zero-two-three-nine, Contract Old World Construction, Residential Roofing Replacement Program. Once again, I'm asking that the volume is kept down. Thank you. Two-five-zero-two-five-zero, Change Order, Mike and Moore Construction Lead Base Paint Hazard Control Abatement Services. Two-five-zero-two-five-one, Contract Avalon Technologies, Police Department IT Storage Update. Two-five-zero-two-five-two, Change Order Number Eight, BSNA Software, Information Services Division. Two-five-zero-two-five-three, Mobile Trucks LLC, Eagle Signal Repair Parts and Supplies. Two-five-zero-two-five-four, DHT Transport LLC, Water Pollution Control Sludge Hauling Service. Two-five-zero-two-five-five, Modern Industries, Ready Mixed Concrete, Department of Public Works. Two-five-zero-two-five-six, Dell Marketing, Microsoft Licensing Renewal. Two-five-zero-two-five-seven, Ace Saginaw Paving Company, Asphalt Paving Materials, Department of Public Works. Two-five-zero-two-five-eight, Grant Acceptance Home ARP Funds Amendment, Home ARP Allocation Plan and Add-on Number One. This is the vote to send the consent-
Point of order.
Yes.
Never mind. I forgot about add-on one. You're, you're okay.
Okay. Um, this is the vote to send the consent agenda to council.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, I do have to say I am having a difficult time hearing because I absolutely did not hear the first separation. And I'm asking now, did you separate the add-on, or you just clarified that it was-
No, it wasn't separated.
So, um, yes, if the attendees could, um, because I'm definitely having a hard time hearing, and we wanna make sure that we record these responses correctly. Um, so, uh, moving on to the roll call. Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The first separated resolution is two-five-zero-one-seven-six. A change order number one, Funding for Phase Two Police Department City Hall Camera Installation. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to send two-five-zero-one-seven-six, um, to council.
There's a motion on the floor by the Councilwoman in the Sixth Ward to send two-five-zero-one-seven-six to councils. There's support.
Support.
It's been supported by the Councilwoman in the Seventh Ward. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to call Detective Sergeant Booth. Um, I have some questions to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening.
I assume you know I've got some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, we're, so this is an add-on, and where are these cameras located? Are they already installed, or are they to be installed?
These cameras are already installed, and they're in, uh, the entire complex. So both the South, North, and Main City Hall building.
Okay. And are these leased?
These cameras are-
Are these, this is not what, um, flock, uh, is it?
RL.
No. These are not flock cameras. These are internal surveillance cameras for security purposes inside and outside the complex. And they are owned. So we purchased the cameras, and they come with a service contract also.
So they come with a service contract, and so these cameras are owned. Are these the intel center, or?
So, yes, these cameras are piped into the intelligence center.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Madam Chair, we got some kind of huge-
Yeah.
Feedback comes from the speaker up there. I don't know who's got their microphone. I don't know who's got their microphone.
Madam Clerk, there's feedback coming in from us. Let me try my, take mine off.
So, how many change orders has there been for this project? There have been 2?
Yes, to my...
And so this one is for the 14,000. Will this complete the number of change order?
Yes.
This is it?
This is it, yes. The project is complete after this approval.
Okay. And there, I know the location is an issue and with disclosing where they are. So they're throughout, all over City Hall or the complex?
Yes, with the exception...
What do you consider the complex?
So, with the exception of inner offices, so there are no cameras in individuals' offices. The camera systems cover the hallway, stairwell access, the parking garage, things like that. So when I say that the entire complex, for instance, this building, first, second, third floor, including the underground parking structure and every stairwell inside the building. And the same for the South and North building, as well as the police department.
Okay, and I appreciate you showing up because the last, I think our deputy chief, he just, he had difficulty answering some of the, just the basic questions. So I appreciate you, actually I asked for you.
Yes ma'am.
Because I appreciate you knowing and, and that was my question, my basic questions, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Pfeiffer.
Detective, what are the change order, what is the change order for? Because I don't see the, any invoices that match that dollar amount that you're requesting for.
I don't know what's in your packet, but I can say that there was an issue with adding on to a project. Once the South Building renovation was completed, there were a couple additions, adding some cameras as well as monitors to make sure that the coverage was proper in that building. So then there was a slight increase as compared to what was originally submitted. So it had to come back for your approval before we could, could make the payment. But the increase was for, to added, added camera systems.
Okay, thank you.
Yes sir.
Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round? Any discussion in the second round? This is the vote to send Resolution 250176 to council.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machat? Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. The vote is 7 yes, 0 no?
The vote is 7 yes, 0 no. That will be sent to councils. The next separation is 250177, Re-allocation of ARP Fund Flint In-Home Plumbing Programs. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we send 250177 to council.
It's been motion made to send to council by councilwoman in the 5th Ward. Is there a support?
Support.
It's been supported by the councilwoman in the 2nd Ward. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have questions about this resolution. Is there anyone through you, Madam Chair? Is there anyone that can answer my questions there in the back?
Hello, how you doing?
I'm well, what's your name?
Michael Carver.
Michael.
Yeah.
Hi, Michael, I'm trying to find it in our supplemental information, but I wanted to find out how many homes are projected to be serviced with the 510,000 allocation?
I have a match also with Eagle, so it should be a projected 400.
400?
Correct.
You said 400?
Yeah, 400.
Okay, it's so, it's so hard to hear. Okay, and so, did we talk about the criteria?
Yeah.
We did talk about that as to how the homes were gonna be selected. Can you go over that again so that the residents can understand it?
Well, the selection process is basically open to all Flint residents. Just come down, fill out an application, and once you fill out the application, I have my inspector come out and test your home to see which house has the most lead and that's the first con, first serve basis that we have.
Pause the time, hold on. People in the hall, we cannot hear in here. Can you please keep it quiet? Either take it farther down the hall or down to another floor. Thank you very much, go ahead.
Okay, you can finish.
Yeah, so basically it's just, it's open to all Flint residents.
And it's open to all, all residents, but you're gonna be looking at the lead, lead levels as well as...
Correct, so that's what would be higher at the least than the others. So that's how we prioritize which house would be done first.
Okay, and have you guys, you haven't received any applications yet as of yet, right?
We receiving applications, but we not, we haven't started anything.
Okay, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you, through you to the speaker. Good evening, sir.
How you doing, sir?
All right, can I ask you just to share again what the range of service would be? What the scope of work that we are willing to provide under this, under this program?
All internal plumbing. From the meter to the shower, to the sink, to the water heater, all internal plumbing.
All internal plumbing, and is there a maximum per household?
As of right now, no.
So there's...
We haven't got to that, so it's still a pilot, so we haven't bid it out the projects yet.
Okay, so, so basically, anything plumbing-wise that needs to be addressed in the home, this program will allow for.
Correct.
And you say that does include, does it include replacement of the water heater?
Long as it's in a deteriorated fashion and/or it has lead residing in the water tank.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
Long as it's in a deteriorated fashion, if it's an old water heater and/or if it has lead residing in it.
Okay. And we have 510,000 dollars to work with?
Now, we have a million. I got, I secured some money from Eagle, so I got 410,000 coming from Eagle.
Okay, so in addition to the 510, in this resolution, there's another 400 that is available to support the program? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay. So, that might, that steal is what, $2,000 per household or something?
Well, we projected about 3 grand per household.
Okay. Do, do we? As we're projecting, do, have, what numbers have you all come up with that might be a reasonable sort of quote or guesstimate to replace plumbing, you know, pipes, whether we're doing, the, it's not PVC, it's PEX, whether we're doing the PEX or whatever? Do you all sort of have a feel as to, you know, a home size of, you know, 1,400 square feet? What it might cost if we had to replace all the plumbing?
Yeah, about 2,500, 22 to 2,500.
Okay, okay, good. I'm just, just trying to get a feel for, you know, how the projections came. And I heard you to say we'll be potentially serving 400 households. So I'm just trying to get a feel for how that actually might, might come to pass. So, thank you for being here to answer questions. I, I think I am, I have better understanding now after hearing you, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
How did we come up with the dollar amount?
Wait, Ms., sorry, go ahead.
How did we come up with the per-house dollar amount?
We had a meeting with some contractors and we just asked the contractors originally, how much would you guys charge to replace plumbing inside of a whole house? And that's kind of the range where we came up with, whereas anywhere from 2,000 to 4,500.
To 4,500?
Yeah, so we settled in the 3 grand, $3,000 range.
So... To me, that is very light. Because how are you replacing fixtures? Like this doesn't include sewer lines, right? This is just strictly water lines?
Correct, just water lines.
No sewer?
Or fixtures, just water lines.
Plumbing program kind of is, plumbing is, is water, sewer, everything, right? So it's strictly water lines?
Yeah, because if it's in a sewer line, you're not intaking...
No, I understand that, but I'm, like the title of the program is In-Home Plumbing Program, but it really is Water Line Replacement Program, right?
Yeah, that's just the title, so...
I understand, but the title is kind of misleading because plumbing includes a sewer. And I just want to make sure we're not replacing sewer lines in a home or anything like that. It's strictly water lines, right?
Yeah, because this, also, it's, it's in my program, so I'm a program manager for the lead office, so we only attack in lead. So if it's in your sewer line, lead in the sewer line isn't harming anybody.
Right, I 100% agree. I'm just making sure we're, we're clear. Because it doesn't, anywhere in this thing it says water lines, it says a plumbing program. I just want to make sure we're clear. Are we removing the existing water lines or are we abandoning the existing water lines?
Oh, completely remove them.
So, what if the water lines are in behind walls? Are we demoing walls and replastering walls?
That'd be a change order where we got to that part of it, we was gonna handle that.
That should be incorporated in all your budgets, right?
Well, I already have that incorporated in my HUD budget. Because again, once we go in and doing the work, it's in tangible with my HUD funds. For us to go in and do the lead work and I have healthy home dollars, which will repair all of unnecessary work that may cause when we removing the lead lines.
So, you're saying that that can be billed above and beyond the million dollars that we got? Or that's gotta be incorporated in the million dollars?
No, that'd be coming out of a different pot of money.
How do we know that that pot of money will be available?
How do we know if it's gonna be available?
Yes. Because we don't have a grant, it's not in front of us right now that we're approving that for any change order.
We already approved it. It's already been allocated to my program, so it's already there. This money would just go into basically a support fund for the lead-based paint hazard control that we already doing work for. Now, instead of just replacing windows, doors, sidings, et cetera, now we can do water lines.
How much money, how much money is in that program?
I got 4 million.
4 million?
Correct.
So, anything above and beyond this million will come out of that 4 million?
If we doing anything as in drywall plastering going in walls, it will go into that fund, correct.
Okay. And this, so if they need a new water heater, they need new sink faucets, whatever else, who's pays for that? Is it just on the homeowner?
Yeah, as of right now, we wasn't replacing any fixtures. I also have another grant with MDHHS which was replacing fixtures, so that also goes into another pot where they was coming in and replacing certain fixtures.
So what if? And Councilwoman Machat, you may be able to help me. What if the, if there is any, if it's lead going from the meter in the house to the road, which isn't covered in the water line replacement, what if that is lead? Who's, who's checking that?
We wouldn't. I thought, yeah.
Because if, if we're replacing the alleged lead lines in the house and we know that the street curb to the main is replaced, what about from the meter, wherever that is in the house, to the road, which is covered by the homeowner? What if that is lead?
Yeah, we haven't got to that part. All I know is right now, everything internal.
Because if we replace everything internal, but we leave that section that's lead, what are we, what are we doing? I, I don't know the answer, I'm asking you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So are you working with Row or whomever? Do you have, I would imagine, you have access to the city records to determine whose pipes had to be replaced because they were lead or galvanized steel, correct?
Correct.
And so I'm guessing with those records, you will be able to determine if from the meter to where he was discussing would also be lead, correct?
Should be, correct.
All right, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Discussion in the second round.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you to the speaker. One question around what might happen as my colleague in the, in the 8th Ward asks about overages for things like the drywall and, and that type of replacement. Have the, have the guidelines for the lead-based paint program that you are referencing for the 4 million changed such that we don't have to necessarily have that, that minor in the home? Because I, my understanding of that program is that it was, it was sort of select and targeted towards households with minors or whatever the age restrictions was. Is that no longer or there's a caveat built in where we can do this?
No, that's still accurate.
Okay, but we, but depending on, I guess, the household then, we may be able to pull money?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I just, just wanted to get that additional again clarification, thank you.
Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So how many applicants do we have so far?
We haven't did a tally yet, but I know in my program alone, we are at 200. So it's, they go hand in hand, so basically 200 applications right now.
So about 200? So I don't see them in our packet, the addresses. Do you have the addresses or will we be able to see them before they're approved to go?
I can get something drafted and sent over to Devina so she can share with you guys.
Can you repeat that for me again?
I can get something drafted and get it over to Devina so she can share with you guys.
And that'll be the addresses?
Correct.
Thank you.
No problem.
There any other discussion in the second round? Go ahead, Ms. Pfeiffer.
So, I'm concerned about from the meter to the road. What piles of money do we have, if that is lead? What piles of money do we have to pay for that?
As of right now, I haven't advocated for any money to replace that. I thought that was already done. So if not, then after this pilot program is done, Eagle is allowing us to advocate for more money. I could change the budget so that we can replace said lines.
Because if we replace all the plumbing in the, in the thing and that we still got a, a lead water line feeding the house, are we then contaminating the new plumbing that we're putting in?
Technically.
See my point, if, if, if these have already been identified as lead, but we're only taking from the meter to the faucet as new, to me, we're... to me, we're putting the cart before the horse, because what's feeding the house that isn't part of this program or the water line replacement is still lead contaminated.
Well, in the program, I have my inspectors, we haven't drafted up the contract. We can put that in the contract for them to test those ones before we do any work.
Because I gotta imagine replacing a water line across the, somebody's yard or around the house, if their water comes through the back, is gonna be a pretty penny.
Well, also, lead moves eleven times heavier than water, so even if we replace the lead lines in a home and we didn't get the meter water, it wouldn't be an immediate problem. It'd be something over time.
Sir, I'm gonna stop you right there. I don't think you want to say on the record that they're going to be, that, that they're not gonna be in, in harm's way.
No, I'm not saying that.
I, I, I don't, I don't even want you to put that on the record. I'm for the program, I just don't think that we're thinking everything through. Maybe there's something I don't know. But, um, I'll yield, but I, I just don't think that, uh, I think we're trying to get this done without making sure all our eggs are in a row, so.
So.
I'll yield.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
All right, so, and I think, um, just part of the issue, right, is sometimes it's internal communication. And so, what's happening here is you know what your program is going to do and what your program is supposed to do. I do know that there have been instances where pipes have been replaced, the specific pipes that you're talking about, um, where driveways have been dug up and some of the yards have been dug up to address exactly what you're saying. I know it was another company that, um, was taking care of it, and I'm not saying it's not the same company that's doing the other parts of the replacement, um, but I know that, that it was replaced at no cost to the resident. So I think what has to happen, um, at some point in time is probably just the internal communication needs to tighten up, because I do know in some instances that, go ahead, what?
What's your request?
Um, are you sure? Because I haven't heard of anyone being replaced from the shut-off valve to the meter. I haven't heard that before.
Okay. Um, I, I can double check, but I think there were a couple people, because they're, they were really ticked that their, um, lawns and stuff never got replaced. Yeah, so Mr. Cup said it was, I'm sorry. Um, Madam Chair, I need you to sell the attorney, he can talk, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Is part of the partnership between the City of Flynn and the State of Michigan that's currently ongoing, when the contractor excavates, they check composition status between the water main, which typically runs under the public road, to the curb stop.
Right.
And they also check curb stop to meter.
No, no, I'm not disputing that, but it's not being replaced.
They, if, if it's found to be non-copper, so either lead or galvanized, and the homeowner consents, they replace whichever part is non-copper.
Uh, I disagree, uh, uh, it's not my time, but I disagree.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
Thank you. Um, so, I'm, I'm not sure if maybe there were some instances where it didn't occur, but it was my understanding that exactly what the attorney said was occurring. Um, and I know of some homes, because I've had, uh, quite a few people call upset because their lawns have not been restored, and it's been a whole chunk, even their driveways are still messed up from the repairs. And so I just think, um, like I said, I, what's happening here is, you know, your part where your program is supposed to do, and the program that you're offering obviously is that in-home fixtures and all of that. Uh, the in-home plumbing, in-home fixtures, and then there's some monies for water heaters and all of that other stuff. I think that there are a lot of moving pieces that perhaps a whole picture needs to be painted for council, but I do think that we are, for the most part, because I'm not gonna say every time, I can't vouch for people's work. But I think, um, in some instances, we are doing the entire replacement to the point where what Mr. Pfeifer is saying, um, where people are not just getting, um, certain parts fixed, and then they're still ingesting lead. And I do want to, uh, agree with my colleague on no safe amount of lead to ingest, so we won't say that here.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Okay, this is the vote to send resolution two five zero one seven seven to council.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no. That will be sent to council. Our next separation is two five zero one eight two, grant acceptance continuing professional education, state and Michigan commission law enforcement standards. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to send two four zero one eight two to council.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the sixth ward to send to council, supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ms.
Um, who do we have here to, could you step to the podium, please? Thank you. Could you give your name?
Uh, Sergeant Dominic Teft.
Say that again.
Sergeant Dominic Teft.
Teft?
T-E-F-F-T, Teft.
Teft, okay, thank you. Um, I had questions about the training and with the MCOS training last Monday, um, during our council meeting. And I had those questions about the training because of the standards. One of the standards that I'm concerned about, um, was the pushing. How do we assess, um, issues or value, not, I'm gonna say evaluate, or address them? There were some issues that were on Home Street, um, there was the macing and the pushing. Um, there was, this is where an officer has been wearing an assault rifle across his chest. I was concerned, deeply concerned about that. And I know with MCOS, um, it is the continued education and for professionalism. Can you tell me what are some of the standards, because this is for a grant, and they teach us, what are some of the standards the Flint Police Department is facing?
I can't answer that question. That's a question for MCOS. Is everybody familiar with MCOS and what MCOS stands for?
I, I am, but I think that as you being the police department, with you being on the department, what department issues does the Flint Police Department face? Because if they're, they're training to address issues, and one of the issues, one is professionalism. I know with the barbecue grill, they were told after people paid for food, go to McDonald's. So very careful that they were. Um, community policing is how we, uh, create a rapport with the public, which has become a problem. And I would say some of it has unfortunately stemmed and poured from our chambers out into the public. And that is a problem. So, when it's speak, when I speak to, when you say you need, that they're training, do you feel that this department has it, things that they need to improve?
This is not me wanting training, this is not the department wanting training. This is MCOS saying that every police officer in the state of Michigan is going to have this training during this three-year pilot program. It's not an option for us. We don't pick and choose. The state standards come down and they tell us what to do.
Okay, and, and I understand that, but that's, this is not what I'm asking you. I'm asking you outside of that. The training, I understand, is standard. And for the record for you, my husband retired from the police department, and they didn't have these issues. So I want that to be very clear. And so when we're looking at these issues, what I'm saying, do you see anything that is outstanding to you that maybe we need to work on? Because this is about training, and it's the same with us with training. I signed the four training seminar things in September with the Michigan Municipal League. I know there are things that we have to work on and it's accountability. Or do you feel, because I actually asked for Chief Green to be here. Do you think this would be better addressed? Because when we had budget hearings, one of the issues was morale. The number of hours worked, running from scene to scene, not being able to, um, properly address a crime scene, because you, a Saturday, a Sat- or two Saturdays ago, or ten days ago, there were seventeen shootings in seventy minutes. And I know that that wears on you. And so when I'm asking for, you know, this is a part of training, in this training and other training, is it something that you see is in the command staff that we need to further address? Now, if you're not comfortable answering it, I completely understand, because I asked for Chief Green, and this is, he should be here. I didn't ask for you, I asked for him to be here, and he's not. I've called him, I've emailed him, he's not responding. And I don't know how you don't respond when you the police chief and you got people in these council chambers who have questions. So I get what you're saying, and I understand what MCOS is. A hundred percent I do. But MCOS speaks to professionalism, it speaks to current issues, it speaks to, um, best practices. Does the Flint Police Department, what is the Flint Police Department best practices?
You, that's above my pay grade, ma'am. I'm here to talk about MCOS, the CPE training, and everything else.
Please.
Okay, and so those are some of the things that, for me, when we're going to train, what are we going to training for? That when we go, we need to make sure we take what we learn and we're able to reuse it out in the public and for our officers. Uh, my time is up, I'll wait for my second round. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeifer.
Um, sir, what is this money used for? Is this used for the dollars it's going to cost to send?
Sir, when you say the money, you're talking about the, the ninety-
The ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Ninety-nine thousand coming from MCOS?
What is, is that going for payroll to send people to this training?
This, none of this is in-person training, this is all online training. It pays for the company that we-
But we still have to pay our officers the twenty-five, the twenty-four hours that they do it, right?
No, the MCOS is paying for that money. That money, that ninety-nine thousand is paying. Not everybody does it on overtime, and I went over this with finance. Uh, maybe, uh, if I had to guess, fifty percent of the officers do it on overtime, others do it when they have downtime during the shift, daytime officers, or whatever.
So the ninety-nine thousand dollars isn't going to cover all of our expenses, correct?
I, I don't work in finance, I don't know the calculations for every officer who does it that way. I know that it pays for the online program that we're using that is MCOS-approved.
So it pays for the program, or does any of this money come back to us for payroll?
Yes.
Does it cost us money to take this online program, or no?
We have to pay a yearly amount for the, the company we went with is Lex pole, and they are the parent company of Police One Academy. We pay six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars a year to be able to use that service.
Okay.
We take all of our training on that Police One Academy.
Okay, I'm sure that that's a budgeted expense, so that's not part of this. So this ninety-nine thousand dollars is strictly to cover payroll for officers to go through this med- this-
Payroll and.
I can help with that.
Okay. Can you say what your name is and your title, please?
Angela Ammerman.
I'm sorry?
Angela Ammerman.
Okay.
I'm the finance accounting coordinator, and I do the accounting for the police department.
Okay.
So, we've initially got forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Countdown, everybody.
So initially, we got four hu- forty-nine thousand five hundred that you guys already approved.
Okay.
We still haven't, they didn't start using this till January, so we have that plus the ninety-nine. And next January, we'll get another ninety-nine. So for this fiscal year, for, since January of twenty-five till June of twenty-six, we have a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to use. So about a year and a half. So I think that, and they, it covers their wages and the, the program that they're using.
What is the cost of the wages for?
It depends on their, the position. So if it's in, you know, like a, yeah, the rank, like, so I don't know what each officer makes or his lieutenant makes or-
But somebody's gotta put pen to paper to say what this is gonna cost, right?
Yeah, so if it's, I just don't, so like, I don't know what his wage is off the top of my head, so it's one hour.
Sir, what are your wages?
So, so it's, so it's one hour, like, or it could be a two-hour class, or-
According to the paperwork, you gotta have at least twenty-four hours of continuing education. So this is every employee times twenty-four hours, and I'm guessing the majority of that, to his point, at least fifty percent's gonna be on overtime, so that's going to be a expensive endeavor.
At this point, it hasn't been, half of it, about twenty-five percent's been overtime.
Okay.
So, and then, but some of them are doing it at home, and they don't get, if they do it at home, they're, they're not ranked, it's not put in their time sheet, so they're not getting paid for it. That was their choice, so some of them are choosing to do it from home, and they're not getting paid for it. So that doesn't come off the grant. It's only comes off the grant what they actually get paid for. Does that make sense? Like, did I say that right?
It does, but I don't understand why they would do it off the clock.
I don't, I want it, but I mean, it's up to them. And maybe it's easier for them, they're, you know, they don't have, they're at home, it's not, it's all this stuff going on and the-
Quiet down.
All the different things going on, and maybe it's easier for them to do it at home with no distractions, or, and I couldn't tell you why.
Talk about that a little bit also. Thank you. Um, we have reserved the computer room on numerous occasions next to HR, with all the computers in, where they can get online. If they want to come in and do it on, and at the computers there, they can get paid overtime on their, on their time off. If they have, have an office here, or they come to the report room and they want to do it on their time off, they come on their time off and they do it here. If they want to do it at home, they don't get to pay for it.
So, are we mandating that this gets staggered out, or they can do twenty-four hours of overtime in one s-
It's broken down quarterly. So throughout the year, quarterly, you have to complete the assignments through the-
So six hours a quarter?
We are playing catch-up because they just started the pilot program last year at June, so half the year, we weren't even involved with it, and nobody knew what was going on. More clarity was, was brought to the light, and now we have to make up-
I have to stop the time, but somebody else will give you time to finish. Is there any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead on my time.
Okay, so we have to make up the twelve hours from the last half of last year. Everybody in the state does. And we do twenty-four for this year, twenty-four for next year, twenty-four for twenty-seven. After that, the pilot program is done. I can't tell you what MCOS is gonna do, I can tell you what my gut says. My gut says that they're gonna make it permanent. They're gonna make it continuing professional education permanently. I don't know if there's gonna be resources for the state to give us money in the future, but all's I know, as of right now, through the December thirty-first of twenty-seven, we have to take this training.
So, um,
Yes.
Excuse me. So, this training is being paid for, for this grant, and if people choose to do it on their own time, they can do that, I wouldn't do it.
And, and just to clear one thing up, and, um, so far, the training that we completed, forty-two percent of it is directly related to cre- community relations and police officer wellness. So this is not just about kicking in doors and shooting and training, this is trying to deal with the community. Community, with people with Alzheimer's, people with mental health problems. Communicating with the youth, I mean, you communicating with the elderly, it's really, we're trying to get close to fifty percent. We don't have a choice of, of half of it. MCOS says these are the ones you're gonna take. The other half, we're mixing in what we think we need. And when I say what we think we need, it's the entire command staff.
So there's electives that you can do, there's certain requirements, and then you have to pick up the rest of your credits as electives?
As electives of one, of the ones that they offer.
Right, and is the city saying, we, yeah, you have to have these, but we're telling you, you have to take these in addition, and then you can take extras? Or are they just mandated to take the courses that are required, and then they can choose whatever electives they want?
No, they are given assignments, and they can do them, but they can go above and beyond for free. And I know many officers have taken additional training on this website, and, and they love it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So, who decides what the department needs?
As far as the training that we're taking?
Yes.
Well, like I said, some of it is from MCOS themselves, the commission. They decide what we have to take.
Right.
Then they give us a list of electives that you can pick from on the website, anything on the website that we go to for, for, Academy One, Police, Police One Academy. Everything on there is picked by MCOS, approved by MCOS. If it's not approved by MCOS, it's not on that website. That's why we chose that website.
So is there any direction that, uh, it comes from, I would say probably from the chief that states, we need to improve in this area? So let's say, community policing. So is there guidance with saying, you know, in your elective part, you know, we're gonna focus on community policing? You know, we know that in Flint, we've had an issue the past year, didn't have one for decades. And so, I mean, does that directive come down? From the chief to state, we need to focus on particular or specific areas?
I, I don't have communication with the chief on this. Um, I know, I, I'm the training coordinator, which means that when everyone, when training's completed, I keep track of it. I don't pick the, the assignments. I don't pick the, the assignments. Lieutenant Robert Frost, who was unavailable to be here, he's a lieutenant in traffic, and he makes the assignments. I don't know if they're, I really don't know if they're discussing the staff meetings, and that's where it comes from, or if it's...
So, Lieutenant Frost makes, what, what does Lieutenant Frost do again?
He's in traffic. He's a traffic, and he's, he makes the quarterly assignments on Police One Academy.
Okay. So, Lieutenant Frost makes the quarterly assignments on that. Because I think if we're doing the training, I think it should be guided. Like, we're, we know we're having an issue with community policing. It should be guided. You know, that's one of the elective courses that should be taken. And, and this, I take the training very serious. And that was one of the reasons why I did wanna speak to the chief, because it is really, you, you go by command. And so, it really starts with him, and addressing those issues. And I know certain times Chief Green has sent other people up here who don't have a clue with the question. You, you are answering, I appreciate you answering what you have.
I'm trying.
Yeah, and, and oh, I appreciate it, I truly do. But I would still like to, to speak with Chief Green.
On your note ma'am?
Yes.
When it talks about effective community, communication for law enforcement? We do, everybody in the department, over the last four years, have or will be trained eight years, or I'm sorry, eight hours in emotional survival, survival and effective communication for law enforcement, which deals directly...
That's my time. I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
Yes. You can continue on my time.
Okay. So, the training I just spoke of is, we just had the training last week, and forty officers were trained on it, eight hours. I'm working through the entire department. Hopefully, they, they come once a year, and hopefully, next year, forty will wrap up the entire Police Department at that point.
Can you ask him how many took the training?
So, how many, how many officers took the training?
So far, for the, the last training I just spoke about, or the training that we're, we're doing with...
Both, both.
MCOs. As of the end of this month, so the next quarter starts in September, everybody will have completed twenty-four hours of the required CPE, MCOs training.
Okay.
And then we'll have additional twelve hours to finish up to get to thirty-six from last, half of last year to all of this year. So, everybody has, and we check, we check at the end of the quarter. And everybody has to be completed, and so far, everyone has.
Oh, okay.
Ask how many people were shot the last weekend.
So, um, did you guys finish the investigation of last weekend?
I don't do investigations.
Oh, okay. I'm just wondering, did we come up with a number? And also, I was...
I can appreciate where you're going ma'am, but I don't have any clue.
This is for their education. Their studies and best practices.
Yeah. And are they gonna discuss, um...
Hey! D S K L. I'm not gonna tell you again.
Yeah.
I've, I've told you about four times now.
Will, will this, um, this money, this training here that we're talking about, will you guys be, um, training police officers as far as de-escalation?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's needed.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely needed. So, that's on the list of things that will be, um, that they will be trained on.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Through you to the speaker. Do we know if that de-escalation training is virtual via video, or if it's gonna be hands-on?
It should be hands-on. And, oh, is it virtual? When can we get some hands-on de-escalation training? I mean, virtual, that's all good and dandy. I believe in, um, when, when I do trainings, I believe in touching all of the, um, you know, virtual. I believe in visual, hands-on, all of it. So, when will there be escalation, um, training? De-escalation training?
De-escalation...
That's it as far as my...
Any other discussion?
Continue on my time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Bad luck every time I wanna...
Go ahead.
The type of training that we're doing online is done, in my opinion, this is no one else's opinion, okay? This is my opinion. It is impossible to get a hundred and four full-time sworn officers to be able to go to training at once without manpower shortage and taking away from coverage on the street. It is not gonna happen. I don't care how you do it. You won't be able to stagger that training and find enough classes that are offered through, through this state anyway. It's, it's nearly impossible. Virtual is the toughest, tough way to learn for some people, but it's what we have right now. And, and mind you, I've done all these videos myself. None of this is new. All of this has been learned in the academy. Now, for me, it's been twenty-seven years, twenty-six years. So, it was very good for me for recall, some things that I had forgotten, some new techniques, some new ideas. But all of it has trained in the academy and continuous training throughout my career. So, I can't speak for, for anything going forward, what's gonna be done in person. I can just tell you that this is very effective training. It's, it's reminder for those coming out of the academy who just had the training, and for an older fella like myself who's been here a while, it's a good reminder. So, that's all I can do and speak about the, the CPE.
So, um, I appreciate the clarification that this is basically virtual training. So, my, my ask of you, as you report back to the chief about your engagement here, is that, um, the administration and the chief worked to commission someone to request grant dollars such that we can do in-person training, especially around de-escalation, as that has been a, not just a community concern that has been voiced here, but a, a real issue at this point. So, and I know there's a resolution here later for some seven hundred thousand dollars from the Mott Foundation, which, um, it wasn't clearly identified how the funds can be used. But when that grant, when that, uh, resolution comes, that's a question I'm gonna ask. Can something like this be funded by that seven hundred-plus thousand dollars? Because it is going to be an undertaking, but it's one that is vital, crucial, that happens here in the city of Flint post haste. Thank you. That's much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'm gonna support this training. But here, I'm gonna, here's my, here's my issue with it. If you're saying that forty people went through, I'm sorry, you said forty people went through community policing or something like that, was the...
Emotional survival and effective communication for law enforcement.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that that was probably a waste of time. And I'm not trying to, like, wha, whatever training is happening, isn't working. And, and I'm not saying that all officers need a hundred percent retraining. I'm saying that maybe we, to, to our conversation, Mr. Booth, maybe specific offers, officers need more specific training. And I think to my colleague's point... To my colleague's point, um, there needs to be more dollars for in-personing training. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, I get virtual training through my nine-to-five. And literally, it's a YouTube video, and you can push play, take a nap, wake up. Especially something that you just admitted on the record, it's everything that everybody knows already. So, to me, maybe it's an ineffective program, because it maybe, being online and virtual, it doesn't capture everything, their attention as much as it should be when it's in person. And I'm not saying it's bad, and every officer does that, but to me, if, especially if it's something that was in the academy, and we have a lot of fresh faces, maybe it's something that they zone out on, get on their phone, whatever else, and not focused the way in-person training, which, uh, it's clear and obvious that we need more training. And the virtual training, to me, based on what you just said and what course forty officers took, unless the forty officers haven't stepped foot in this chambers or downtown recently, the training's ineffective. So, I, I think Detective Booth, as we spoke earlier, we need to hone in on making sure we have officers placed where they're most effective. And the militant guys that we have in this room and downtown during peaceful dinners at night, maybe aren't the right people in those spots. So, I'll yield it and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the second round? Go ahead, Ms., Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. All right, so I just wanna make, be clear in that I hear what I'm hearing. So, this training right here is mandated, right?
Yes.
All right, so if we don't do it, then what?
If we don't do it?
Yeah, so if we don't approve this grant, then what?
If we, well, we'll have to pay for the training, uh, the police budget.
Okay. So, the ninety-nine thousand, instead of being a grant, it had to come out of our funding, so we will have to do it regardless, right?
Correct.
All right. So, I wanna make sure I was clear on that, 'cause that's, I support it for that reason right there. And also, are you familiar with the, um, with the peacekeepers training?
No.
No? Okay. All right, very well. I see Officer Booth, he's shaking his head. There are many opportunities that this body, as well as the community, that they're afforded to take, to get in these spaces and see the training that's taking place. I participated in the training with the, with the Sheriff Department. And so, um, my other thing that I wanna really hone in, and is the fact that it is, when we have these kinda concerns about training, there are other municipalities, they face the same issues that we do. And that's the point of us going to conferences and getting training, and being around other council people, so we can see what they're doing in other municipalities that share the same challenges. And so, I would like to challenge my colleagues, I know it sounds good to throw things a, at you all, but we too have the capabilities to reach out to places like Detroit, places like Grand Rapids, places like Chicago. If you talk, they talk back. And you, we all can get a feel for the trainings that they have that's effective within their, within their police force. So, it's important for, when we say that we are engaged and that we wanna see something different, and that when we're inquiring, it is important for us to, like, some of us stated, I will not meet with the mayor, I will not meet with the administration. This right here is when we meet, and we engage, and we bring these things to them. So, when we have issues, we can say, we did our part, but you didn't do yours. Yes, it's definitely a while, because it's a all boots-on-the-ground effort. I'm not gonna talk to you about training and be serious about it when I'm not trying to look for training that works for police officers and bringing it to you. We just can't do that. And so, again, I support this MCO mandated training. I support, and I wanna encourage my colleagues to take advantage and step in, stop in, stop by, and see the other trainings that they have taking place. There's quite a few taking place here i, i, around the area. And so, we all can gauge for ourselves if they're effective, what needs to be changed, and reach out to other municipalities to see what's working there. It's a win-win situation, and to boo that is ridiculous, because it's a step forward in the right direction. So, thank you.
Any other discussion in the second round? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for coming in, discussing the training. I think that we've all hit on some, well, you all have hit on some very important points here. One, that it is mandated. I think obviously, everybody in here can agree that police training should be mandated. You talked about how, um, they will learn some de-escalation techniques. You talked about how they'll learn how to deal with patients with, excuse me, residents who might, may have dementia, who may have some sort of mental health concern that they have going on. I know, um, of possibly, uh, some people who may have, uh, different issues with maybe medication, opioid addiction, anything like that. It sounds like they're gonna get training to learn how to properly de, de-escalate those situations. I think that, um, what a lot of my colleagues up here said, it works out, right? I know that we know what's gonna be mandated by the state, and you said they're offered, they can take some more trainings, and that some things are a bit above your pay grade, when we're talking about what some of the specific trainings in the city of Flint are. I think that you will take it back to the chief, and the chief is probably watching the meeting, um, if he's available to watch right now. And Detective Booth is certainly gonna take it back to him. Some of the suggestions that my colleagues made, um, as we approve this, we do want to make sure that we are heard in the future of the fact that some of that training may need to be in person. Because, um, while I won't go as far as to say it's ineffective, because there are some people who really take their career paths seriously, who take, um, community policing seriously, and so they do want to get better. But we have a family who's here today because, um, of something that happened that could have been handled differently, right? And so, what we can do is take what they're saying, listen to my colleague in the ninth ward, listen to my colleague in the eighth ward, make sure that some of that training does happen in person. Make sure we're listening to my colleague in the second ward, when she says that everyone would do, um, it would do us all a better service for the city, for all of us to go through training, to reach out to different municipalities and say, hey, I see some similar situations are happening there, or they have happened there, and you've been, you've managed to, um, de-escalate situations, or you've managed to, uh, come together and make it better. So, how can we, um, as the Flint Police Force or Flint City Council, whomever, uh, do these things better? I am excited that we're all on the same page about approving this training, because one thing we can be clear on, whether it's in-person or virtual training, is absolutely needed for every police force, and our police force especially. I know we have some dedicated men and women who serve here, right? And that they do want this training, they do want to get better. We know that human error happens all the time. And so, I think the best way that we move forward as a community, after checking ourselves and our behavior and making those adjustments, is we go to these trainings, and we learn how to get better at the jobs that we're doing. So, thank you for standing here before us today. I know a lot of it was a bit above your pay grade, uh, but I think you, um, helped us understand some things beautifully, such as this is mandated training, there will be some de-escalation training, and if we don't pay for it this way with this grant, it's coming out of our pockets anyway. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna take, uh, just a few minutes and, um, ask, per Councilwoman Pfeiffer's question, are there tests that they, that are conducted at the end of each one of these trainings?
Yes, and there, these are, none of these videos can you press play and go do laundry or go do the dishes. In fact, at the end of every one, there is a test. And the majority of them that I saw, if you fail it twice, you take the training again. So, that's another hour that you're gonna watch a video. And there's a remarks section at the very end, and I put the same thing every time. Make the buttons bigger that I have to continue, because I can't see them even with my readers on. So, it's every, every thirty seconds, you're pressing a button to continue, or you have to click on the icon to continue. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I would've had the same problem if I could just sit there and let it play. I'd probably be on my phone. But this is something you have to, and there are, uh, questions throughout that you have to answer. And if you get them wrong, it kicks you back to the beginning, you're starting over again. So, when you get to the end, it's eighty percent passing, you only get ten questions. If you miss three of them, you get a one, one more try at it, and do it again, you're going back and doing the training again.
The reason why I ask is because that's exactly the, my experience with my online training. I work remote from, with QuickBooks. All of, we all work remote, our, my team, I've had teams from coast to coast with members on it, um, as well as north and south. So, we have to have a certain percentage in order to go on. And if you don't, you have to retake it. And every year, we have to recertify in order to keep our jobs. If you don't recertify by June thirtieth, you're done. There's no second chance. You get sixty days to recertify. You take the test three times, you get locked out, you can come back after forty-five days. But by that time, you might be out of a job. So, um, that's why I want...
The funding itself is not the most important thing. If an officer does not take these twenty-four hours of training a year and complete them and pass them...
They lose their certification.
MCOs will pull their certification. You can't be a police officer in the state of Michigan without MCOs approval.
Okay.
Period.
Thank you very much. That was my question. I wanted to, um, get clarification of that because of what, um, Mr. Pfeiffer was talking about with, with YouTube. And I understand that you can take these, that there are trainings online that are YouTube, but that has not been my experience. So, I just wanted to see what that was. This is the vote to send Resolution two-five-zero... This is the vote to send Resolution two-five-zero-one-eight-two to council. Thank you.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
Vote is seven yes, zero no. That will go to council. The next resolution, two-five-zero-one-nine-eight, Contract Fleece and Vanderbrink Water Asset Management Water Reliability Plan, Department of Public Works, Water Division. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
Four, I'm sorry. Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to, um, have a good debate.
Councilwoman in the seventh ward has made a motion to send to council. Is there support? Supported by the Councilwoman of the seventh. Second ward, is there any discussion? All right, do you want Scott? Mr. Dungy? Go ahead.
So, if this was part of the, uh, ACO, did we get funding for this?
No.
What exactly is this study going to tell us that we don't already know?
So, in twenty-eighteen, they did this study. So, what this study is to assess what has been done since twenty-eighteen.
Hold, hold, hold the time. I'm going to ask again for the people in the hallway to please keep the noise down. We cannot hear, and neither can our clerks. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, we're going to ask somebody or give somebody one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to modify our twenty-eighteen report when we don't know internally what we've done since twenty-eighteen?
So, that, that's a part of it, to incorporate all of the assets that have been invested in, everything that's been replaced, everything that's been upgraded, put that in the new asset management plan, see where we're at.
I know, but don't we already know that?
To a certain extent, we do know some things, but there's still some things that need to be evaluated, and they have to put that together and put it down on paper to see if you can pay your bills. You know, that's what a part of this is for. It's like a, like your home budget. It's to assess your prior bills, current bills, and your capital improvements. Look at what capital improvements you need to do, what didn't we complete in the last eight years?
So, this company is going to come in and we're going to turn over all of our documentation, correct, that, of the stuff that we've done?
Yes, we will work with them and, and give them all of the OEM manuals and stuff like that, so they can incorporate that into a digital format, to where we can look at all of our assets, to create a budget that'll last us twenty years.
Pause the time.
Pause the time. I'm asking again for people in the hallway to please keep it down. If you're leaving, please be quiet as you go out the door, because we are trying to conduct city business, and we have important questions that need to be answered, and we only have a limited amount of time to do that in. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm just trying to grasp, like, so, we've got a twenty-eighteen report, we have all of our documentation, and we know what we've done.
Correct.
Because to me, this is, like, one-hundred-and-thirty-six thou, that's two full ti, full-time employees that we're paying, and they're, and how long are they going to be working on this?
Well, it was supposed to be done by the end of this year, but we know we're not, probably not going to be able to complete that, so we'll have to ask for an extension.
And then, after this report comes in, what's the next step?
To tie that into the rate study, to give that asset management plan, our budget, the Water Service Center's budget, to administration, and incorporate that into the rate study, and assess it, and, and make sure that we have a budget that'll last us twenty years.
But the rate study isn't part of the ACO, right? So, we're, we're, we're using this for our rate study that the mayor wants to do, right? That has nothing to do with the ACO. So, what's the, what's the purpose of this document?
It's hard to know a proper rate study without knowing your assets and your budget.
I understand that, but the ra-
And that's the purpose, that's what this is to do.
But the rate study was not part of the ACO.
No, the rate study is just to make sure you're-
The rate study, the rate study is irrelevant to this right here, because we're saying that this is mandated by the ACO.
So, if you don't do this, you can't do a proper rate study.
I don't want to hear about the rate study. I don't, no offense, the rate study has nothing to do with this. So, why was this put in the ACO when the rate study wasn't part of the ACO? What is the purpose of this document, outside of the rate study?
There is some wording in the ACO that ties this to the rate study, but this assessment is to look at the water plant's budget and the Water Service Center's budget, and make sure we're solvent for twenty years. So, we'll leave the rate study out of it. This is just to assess the water plant and the Water Service Center, to look at past, current, and future, to, to look at our budget and show that we're solvent for twenty years. So-
So, why didn't the rate study in twenty-eighteen prove that we're going to be solvent for twenty years, and we have to redo it eight years later?
Because we haven't completed the ACO. So, a part of that is, we've completed eighty percent of what they've asked us to do, but we haven't completed the rest. So, a part of this is, how are you going to complete the rest?
I understand that, but if we paid for this in twenty-eighteen, the same study, why doesn't that prove that we're solvent for twenty years, and we have to do it eight? So, I guess my question is, in eight years, are you going to come back and say, "We've got to do another one of these studies," the way that it's eight years since the last one?
Most municipalities do an asset management every three to five years to verify that they're on track with what they were supposed to do. A lot of times, you can set up this twenty-year budget, and things happen, you know, unforeseen things, and the next thing you know, our, our budget isn't enough, we don't have enough funding, and capital improvement's the first thing to get cut. So, they just want to make sure that, you know, by doing this, you can show the state of Michigan that you're on top of your budget, you're, you're doing things as you planned, and you're current on all your stuff. And so, if you want to apply for Safe Drinking Water Act funds, this kind of incorporates, they, they want to look at that to see if you're solvent, if you're paying your bills.
And Scott, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be confrontive, I'm just trying to wonder why, if this is supposed to be valid for twenty years, we just did one in twenty-eighteen, like, I'm just trying to wonder, like, don't we keep up with it every year, or we just do it once, close our eyes, and then when something else comes abroad, then we can say, "Okay, we need another one." Why don't we, why don't we be proactive and have living documents and keep up with this every year and not let it go delinquent, where we need this study every year, or every three years, the way that you said other municipalities? And I'm trying to figure this out, like, if, if we know that we replace this water line or this valve, or, like, why aren't we keeping a living document on the last study to keep up with it, instead of now we're scrambling to hire somebody else to go back and recapture everything?
So, we do have a, a portion of a living document, which would have been the TMF. So, the state did want us to give, every six months, give them a technical managerial financial report, saying, "Are we on track with that stuff?"
So, in my last thirty seconds, can you tell me what the difference between this and the TMF is? What's the difference, and how is this going to be better, where we don't have to do this?
The TMF was something that the state required us to do under the ACO, so they could make sure we were staying on track. The asset management is a municipality's responsibility for themselves to make sure they're staying on track.
But why is this part of the ACO, then, if it's-
Because we haven't done it, and we haven't done it in a long time.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round?
Um, Madam Chair, go ahead. Is this Mr. Dungy, excuse me, Mr. Dungy, I'm trying to have a council meeting. Is, is this the, um, one where we change the wording for the city to May instead of Shell? Because I think that, is, is this the particular item that, and I think it was your suggestion, correct, Mr. Pfeiffer, um, in the ACO, where we change the wording from May to Shell?
That I don't know. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I'm pretty sure, uh, Judy, do you recall us changing?
I don't recall that.
I could have sworn we did. Is there somebody who can speak to that really quickly, who might know the answer? I don't think so, I don't think they're up here.
What's your request?
Yeah, we made an edit, you made it, and we agreed to the edit. Oh, yeah. Um, Clerk Don, uh, excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Ms. Donahue?
Clerk.
Didn't we change some wording in that from the city May to the city Shell? And I, I believe it was my colleague in the eighth ward's suggestion.
I don't- I don't, I don't think we did any changes to the ACO. No.
I could have sworn that we changed some language.
I'll have to look it up, but it was, keep going, I'll have to look.
All right, this is only the first round?
Yeah. I have to look at my old stuff.
All right, um, I'll come back in a second. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Because it's two resolutions regarding this, isn't it? Mr. Dungy, how, um, I did have a question, I did write something down that I wanted to ask, and I don't know if it's on this. So, this contract is basically, first, how was, how was this, um, company, how were they selected?
We went through the bidding process, the RFP.
You did?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how will a city ensure that this firm delivers a plan that is both compliant and, and practical for Flint's infrastructure?
Well, we'll be working with them closely. Uh, we've had, uh, Fleeces and Vanderbrink working with, with the city of Flint since twenty-sixteen, when we lost our OIC. Um, also, all of that stuff will be reviewed by Eagle a- as it's getting done, so I'll have them district engineers verifying that they are achieving what they should do. Uh, Mr. Edwards and administration, I will have meetings with them regularly to bring them up to date on every, you know, weekly or bi-weekly on what events have transpired during that time and, and stuff of that nature.
So, you've taken over where Mr. Miller left off, and making sure that these projects, um, are on track?
Well, this project was pretty much mine, I've been ramming around it. Yes, I worked for, for Ken, and Ken was my boss, and, and we would work together, and I worked with Mr. Edwards, and until they get somebody else.
Okay. Because, um, I don't know. How many of those projects have we completed?
I've never completed one of them. Uh, like I said, the state came in in twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, they, they set it up for Arcadis to do it, I, and they overseen it at that time. I was just a foreman at that time, so I wasn't a part of it.
All right, um, I'll yield.
Is there anyone else?
In regards to the question that was previously posed, I'm just going to provide the information right now, that that resolution for the administrative consent order passed as presented on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. It had no, um, it had no, um, changes to it. There was no point one, so it was the original order that was. All right, any other discussion? Okay, so, um, any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the second round? And I know that you want time.
I'll, I'll kill some time first. Um, so, Scott, I didn't vote for the ACO. The, the questions I have are- How-
Yeah, I think so.
What happens if we don't do this?
Well, it is on the ACO, so I, they will mandate it one way or another, I don't know. I mean, they, they could get to the point where they could penalize us for not following the ACO, but-
Again, hold, hold the time. We're having difficult, Mr. Dungy speaks softly, we're having trouble hearing. Please keep the chatter down to a minimum. Thank you, go ahead.
But Eagle doesn't really want to find us, they want to work with us, so I'm sure at that point, we would probably have some more meetings to sit down, to try to discuss this.
But, like, our water and sewer, I mean, we're in deficits as far as the eye can see, so if they want to work with us, like, don't they, do they have any money to help us? Like-
Yeah, I, I understand.
I mean, they're, they're, and that's why I didn't agree to the ACO, is stuff like this, money that we don't have.
Right, right.
Like, if the ACO came with fifty percent reimbursement or something like that to help us out, but to me, how, how is this, how is this going to help the residents of today?
This will better help us understand where we're at financially and, and budgetary-wise with the water plant and the Water Service Center. As far as the residents, I mean, it all affects the residents, because they ultimately pay for all of this.
To me, to me, that is a derelict duty of our finance department, if we can't, uh, credibly look at our accounts and see where we're at. Like, how, how is it that we need this company to come in and look at our financial solvency of the water department? Like, to me, isn't that the, the responsibility of the finance department? I mean, to me, I mean, I'm not-
I'm not a finance person.
Like, I can work an Excel sheet, and I can look at numbers, and to me, we should have been running through with our hair on fire a long time ago on these accounts. But now, we're going to spend one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars for somebody to come in and say, "Uh, yeah, you guys should have been in here screaming, hollering ten years ago." Like, we're already drowned, and we know that, and now we're going to pay for somebody to say, "Oh, you need a life preserver." To, to me, that doesn't make sense.
But you have to assess it eventually at some point in time to see exactly where you're at.
I'm not saying we don't have to assess it, I'm unders, why isn't this something that, a report that can be done internally, where we don't have to spend one-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars that we do not have?
We don't have that, that specialized personnel staff.
To look at finances?
This, I, I think personally, the water and sewer is a little bit more intricate than just looking at-
So, can you send me, maybe, maybe I'm ignorant to, to what this is, can you send me the twenty-eighteen report, so I can see what that is?
Yes.
To, to get a better grasp of what we're asking them to, to determine whether or not-
Yes.
With your help and finance, we can't come to something to, to, because I know this is part of the ACO, but it doesn't say we can't do that report internally.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So, can you send me the twenty-eighteen report? Let me educate myself-
Okay.
To see if, I think that it's something that we should be able to handle from just my own, um, perception of people's abilities.
Sure.
And then, I'll go from there. I'll, I would be, I'll be ecstatic if I can get that report before Monday.
It'll happen.
And then, we'll go from there. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you.
Can I, can I say one thing, too?
Yeah.
When they developed that asset management in twenty-eighteen, a part of it was revenue-driven, too. So, we were in financial distress at that time, too, so a lot of the steps-
Nothing has changed.
I know, and a lot of that, but, but some, a lot of things have changed. You know, at that time, so, we had a bunch of bad meters. The Water Service Center changed all of the meters out, so now they're getting accurate readings on meters, so, so a lot of things have changed.
So, I know I yielded, but I'll, I'll be quick. Fundamentally, what is going to be different on this report versus the twenty-eight report? Can you also shoot me a little summary or- what is going to be different on this report versus the 28 report? Can you also shoot me a little summary or shoot it to the clerk so she can share it to everybody? What substantially is going to be different from the 2018 report versus this report we're asking to, to approve? Thank you.
Okay, that's, I'm gonna, because we don't know how much time was left on that. Okay. All right. Um, is there any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Mrs. Dunhy. How are you this evening?
Good. And yourself?
So here's my quest with Fleece and Vanderbrink. Is this, is their contract about to end?
Uh, it, it's kind of rolling. It, I'm trying to get it terminated, but it's hard to keep staff. So I took over the OIC. But they are now also covering the lab. I had two lab techs in there. One lab tech just left. We're in the process of rehiring another lab tech and
Hold on, I, I can't hear you.
And a lab supervisor. Once I get fully staffed, I can give them a notice, 120 day notice to leave. But that, I am working on that.
I couldn't hear you. Can you, and I heard you say you took over the licensing.
It's an ongoing contract. They've been with us since 2016. The first thing I was able to do is get the state license to be the operator in charge. So we relinquished them of that duty. But they, in the meantime, the lab staff left, all of it. So they started covering the lab. I've replaced two lab techs. One just left, uh, but we, we reposted. So as soon as I can get the lab fully staffed, I will give them.
Did Jeanette Best retire?
Pardon me?
Is Jeanette Best still with us?
As far as I know she is.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, so what this report where we're asking, this was in the water, the, the Arcadis report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so why are we duplicating what they already said to do?
Because that's eight years old.
Okay. So what's changed from eight years old to, to now?
$170 million worth of investment in this town.
So the spreadsheets that we received, shouldn't we just deduct those off? Does it cost 136,000 just to remove those off? You got a very nice spreadsheet, by the way.
Thank you. Well, well, a part of it is to, to do the full assessment, rate all your stuff and, and look at your capital improvement. You know, and, and figure out what it's going to cost to, you know, to save for that capital improvement. So it's looking to the future too. I mean, we fixed a lot, but there's still a lot that needs to be fixed. How are we going to come up with that money? That's what they want to see.
And that's why I did not approve the administrative consent order. And I thought we needed more time and discussion on that. And also, and I read it and also the water optimization plan, the Arcadis report. And so this doing, duplicating the same things, where are we at? Do you guys have a DPW yet? A DPW director?
We have a deputy director that we just hired.
Oh, who is, who are they?
Marwan, I can't pronounce his last name. I just met him the other day.
Can you slightly, can you spell it?
No, I don't have it with, I'm sorry. I don't have it with me. So I don't want to misspell it.
Oh, okay. So does he carry licensing? Because you're, you have some.
He has a D2 and, uh, he's an engineer, I want to say. He's a deputy DPW director.
He's a deputy. Does he do engineering?
Pardon me?
Does he do engineering?
No. He wasn't hired for that. He was hired.
Oh, he's going to be hired.
To oversee the water plant.
Where did he come from?
And water pollution control.
Okay.
Detroit, DWS.
That's my time. Thank you. Any other person in the second round?
I want my clock to stay stuck at 28.
Anyone else in the second round? Um, I'm going to take a few minutes. So I know that, um, Mr. Pfeiffer is interested why our finance department can't do the study to determine rates. Um, Mr. Moore? Oh, I, because they don't have time. Yeah. Uh, so, okay. Well, I will go ahead and yield my time and just go ahead and call for the vote to send 250198 to council.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
The vote is four yes, three no?
Madam Chair.
The vote is four yes, three no. Yes.
Motion to send to special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to send 250198 to special affairs. Is there support? I'll support that. This is the vote to send 250198 to, to special affairs.
Ms. Mishat? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
No.
The vote is six yes, one no?
The vote is six yes, one no. That will go to special affairs. Our next separation is 250218 prevailing wage standard, city funded construction project. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, motion to send to council.
There's a motion on the floor from the councilwoman in the seventh ward to send to council. Is there any support? I'll support that. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm a no on this. Because to me, this shouldn't come in front of us as a resolution. This should be to change the purchasing ordinance so that everyone is notified of this. Because this right here doesn't, uh, say that we're going to notify anyone in the RFPs or, or put any of that in the purchase decree, or the purchase ordinance. So to me, this, um, puts preferential treatment on, um, preferred contractors and it actually is going to cost the city more money, more money that we do not have. As the purchasing director stood before us and said that this council chambers was done by a non-union contractor and they did a good job. So why do we need to pay union rates for someone to mow lawns or any other thing in the city? To me, and I am 100% pro-union, but we are putting disadvantaged, uh, contractors that do similarly quality of work at a huge disadvantage because we're disqualifying them to do work. So, um, to me, this gives preferential treatment to an outside of the city union contractor versus a city-based local contractor that may be non-union. So, uh, I'm a no on this and I'm a hard no. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the second round, uh, first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have also stated in, it seemed like this came back. I thought we have voted this down. Yeah, I thought it had been voted down. Um, I will not support this. I know that it's difficult for minority contractors to even to get into business, making sure to get the proper insurance, um, to even do jobs. And so again, I am a no on this. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so, and to Mr. Pfeiffer's point, I know you missed the last meeting, but this was the one I was talking about where you had some specific wording that you asked to have changed. Uh, and so if you look in the, the resolve section, it, it, the language was changed. It said, uh, therefore it is resolved that to stabilize the local workforce and enhance the community, the city of Flint shall preferentially award construction contracts to successful bidders to the extent provided by law that pay their subcontractors and construction, excuse me, construction mechanics no less than the prevailing wage rates and fringe benefits on city projects. And I know the words there were originally may, and you, you did say that if it was changed to shall, that you could support this. So I just wanted to remind you of that and show you that, um, because that was your suggestion, the language was changed. Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I yield.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else in the first round?
Madam.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So. Again, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of noise coming back from the back. Please, we, we are having extreme difficulty tonight in hearing. Go ahead.
So we had individuals here to speak on this and we did not give them the opportunity to speak on this. It was a, a group of, um, union workers that were here and they came to the lectern to voice their support and then they were here waiting to, um, to speak and to engage with council. But unfortunately, you know, quorum was broken and they were not able to do that. So what? No, don't do that. That's, that's, I'm bringing you the order. Stop. You know better. So, moving forward, it's important that we consider this because this is to establish like the states of prevailing wage to make sure that people that are local are getting, uh, a fair and just wage when they do local work. I don't see a, a downside to this, making sure that people get an honest wage for a honest day's work. And so I will, I like to encourage my colleagues to, you know, think about the union. This is a union town. And we have union, um, union people watching. They have union people supporting this. They have union people coming to this meeting. And so us telling them that we're not for the prevailing wage is telling them that we are not, um, for union. So we gotta, uh, really consider what we're saying. And also make sure that we have a clear understanding of what's happening because it seems like that we do not. When they came to the lectern, again, they stated that this is for exclusively to ensure that they are providing a equal wage for local, um, for the local workforce. It sounds like a win. So I'm just still waiting to hear. Maybe I've missed it now. I would like to encourage my colleagues to please bring it home so I can have an understanding of why that specifically is not good for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? And this resolution was brought back, by the way, in June. Any discussion in the second round? Go ahead.
At no point did I say that nobody should get a living wage. To me, this is a whole of city budget amendment through you, Madam Chair, to the CFO.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, while you're walking up here, have we looked at the dollars of what, if this passes, what additional dollars this will cost the city? Because we give contracts out to non-union people all the time. So have we looked at what this will cost the city?
I'm not aware of any studies.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Thank you. So, um, where's the, where's the budget amendment that if we pass this, that all of, every dollar that we spend is now going to be escalated? So are the roofing contractors that just got put through, are they, uh, prevailing wage? Because are the lead-based contractors that are going to do all these replacements, are they prevailing wage? Where's the budget amendment to now we gotta give all these contractors more money? And now we gotta relook at the budget. And I think that to me, this is before us for a specific reason. And it's to preferably give a contract to a higher bidder. So, um, and at no point in this does it say we're going to notify the bidders? That we are going to relook at and put this on any of the RFPs that's saying, you may be the low bidder, but if you don't provide prevailing wage, you're not going to get the job. We're not going to put that on the RFPs. We're not going to redo the purchasing ordinance. So that's why I am a definite no on this. To me, there is, there's a reason that this is before us. We functioned as a union town for how many? For a century without this. And now all of a sudden, we get this before us and it's detrimental to, to, to living wages in the city when we don't even hardly hire anyone in the city. So I'm a no.
Is there anyone, is there anyone else? In the second round? Is there anyone else in the second round?
Madam Chair, thank you. So with that being said, um, I would like to send this to special affairs and the reason why is so we can, is so we can have the union people come and have them tell us exactly, you know, from their epistemology of what they think. You know, because I, I hear what we're saying, but, um, I also would like to hear from the people that are actively in the field because it's easy to clap, you know, but I want to hear directly from the people that will be engaging in this. And so, um, I will ask, is there anyone here, um, Madam Chair?
There's a motion on the floor to send.
No, it's not. I'm still talking. So, um, I would like to know, is it anyone here for administration that can speak to this?
I know Lauren had been here before and she's not here now. Is there anyone who can? Is there anyone who can speak on this resolution? I don't see one. Um, Lauren was here one day to speak on it and she, we broke, we lost quorum.
Okay. All right. So I would like, I would like to afford.
What's your request?
Are you aware that Lauren spoke against this and we didn't break quorum, we voted it down?
She was here in another opportunity. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, if possible, could we leave this? I would like to put a motion on the floor to leave this and
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to put a motion on the floor to leave this in special affair, excuse me, to take this special affairs. So we can give the union representatives an opportunity to come speak on this so we can hear the others' perspective that we're lacking. That way we have a, a fair stance. We are here from Lauren. We're here from the people in the.
Um, request of information.
What's your request?
Uh, so the first time it was Lauren, the second time Seamus is who came and spoke about this. And then he also showed that there was the change in the language that Councilman Pfeiffer at requested.
I, I didn't.
She's, can you repeat what she said? Yeah, because she did a.
Well, there was no other way to give her the other name.
She said the first time, um, Lauren had spoken on it and then Shane, Seamus came and spoke on it.
Okay.
And they made the changes that were in this, this resolution.
Okay. And so, um, after, and who requested these changes through you to the councilman in the seventh ward?
Yeah, she's.
It was Councilman Pfeiffer because the original wording said may and he wanted it to say shall.
Okay. So he said, no, that's not true.
It happened.
Okay. So with all that being said.
What, was that a point of order?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, where are we? Are we in discussion? Because there was a motion, but there was a motion to send it to special affairs twice.
I asked her if there was a motion. She has not made the motion yet.
No, that's, that was the first time when she corrected you.
She has not made the motion yet.
She, she did it a second time. She said, I want to send this to special affairs and continue discussion. So I'm trying to understand where we are. Are we in discussion or are we at the motion?
I am not asking. We're still in discussion of the second round. She has 27, 27 seconds.
Thank you. And so in order to be fair and to hear all perspectives, I think it'd be a great idea if we push this to special affairs so we can hear from all parties and so we can just have a flat out answer.
Is that a motion?
And so with that being said, I would like to put a motion on the floor to send this resolution to special affairs for more discussion.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to send resolution 250218 to special affairs. Is there support? It's been supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. This is the vote to send to special affairs.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mishat?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, four no?
The vote is three yes, four no. We're back to the original question. Is there any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Okay, this is the, um, the vote to send 250218 to council.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Mashat? Mr. Pfeffer?
No.
The vote is three yes, four no?
The vote is three yes, four no. That motion fails. We're going on to the next resolution, which is 250220 settlement, Barton versus Neely. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion on the floor by the Councilwoman in the Seventh Ward to send to council. Is there support? Is there support? I'll support that. There we go. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
So, this is the resolution where former fire chief Raymond Barton was terminated. I did not go back into executive session specifically because I don't think everything should be talked about behind doors when this affected people's very real lives. This is the Pulaski Street Fire. This is where two little boys lost their lives and that a mother and father had to grieve and bury their two little boys. We had a hearing on this. We didn't get all five, we had five votes, it should've been all nine, we did not. I know that with this, um, it was during, I believe, an election time and information was suppressed. Former fire chief Barton was told basically, basically to, or it is alleged to take responsibility. He declined. As information came out, I believe they said it would be political suicide. He was asking ten million, he's settling for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. A big difference. I didn't go in the back so that I could speak about it. I think that as elected officials, we have a responsibility to not cover up issues like this. This affected children, this affected a family. This mother is now suing and I believe she's working towards the settlement stage to where she's suing for fifty million dollars. I don't know how you put a price on something that people were negligent. I read the reports and they stated that if the firefighters had went into that room, that they wouldn't have missed the little boys. A second rig, the first rig didn't find them. A second fire rig found them. They were airlifted, I believe, to Children's Hospital and this was preventable. This mother was then said in the, in the news and by even some of our colleagues that she didn't have smoke detectors. Where was the father? I mean, they put it back on the mother and the, the parents. Electrical fires burn quicker than any other fire and a house can burn down in a very short amount of time because it travels along the wires and then those walls can be insulation. And we don't know what type because in Michigan, a lot of our homes are older. The insulation could be old Flint Journal newspaper, it could be old clothing. But what I do know is that dealing with this with Mayor Neely, he shouldn't have interfered. These two officers, if it was a mistake or whatever, the mayor shouldn't have interfered. He should've let the story be told so that the community and other officers could've learned from this. He shouldn't have interfered. This is a lawsuit that sued him and said he didn't qualify for it's a qualified immunity. He didn't do deposition. He refused to do it, or not necessarily refused to do it, he kind of escaped it, he was always busy. And so, the city of Flint shouldn't be bearing this responsibility, it should actually be him. This was his election year and he decided to put them, you know, they on paid leave. That wasn't the recommendation, recommendation of the fire chief. What the fire chief recommended was to terminate them. The mayor overrode, huh, the fire chief. The mayor overrode the person who had fire safety training, one, two, three, commander's training, all of that. He overrode them and kept them. They did, was it eight hours or six hours of that little video training? And they continued to hide the fact of what happened. And now, we have a lawsuit that we're responsible, responsible for. I remember when Councilman Mays was sued, the mayor made it a point of saying, "He was gonna make sure Councilman Mays paid for his side of his money and he was going to make sure he took it out of his check." The same thing should happen with the mayor with this. Two little boys lost their lives and he shouldn't have intervened. I don't know what's going on with our time, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I had to move the laptop and it messed up, so I'm not sure, but I'm just gonna put it at two, two and a half, if that's okay?
Okay.
Halfway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And so, what did Flint learn from this? It taught people to lie. It taught people to cover up. It taught to not take those parents' pains seriously. That second rig came, had to carry those little boys out. We had the fire chief fired, then we had the deputy fire chief, she was told she would be terminated. And she ended up saying, "Hey, check my contract." Because they were gonna demote her down. So, we lost two people with talent and skill, which talent and skill is hard to keep here in Flint. I remember people sat up at the corner of Pearson Road with the family and their attorneys and listened and watched the mother wear the T-shirts and she sat over here in our corner with her T-shirt on and crying. She couldn't even, when she came to the podium, she couldn't even get her children's names out. And then, we're given a settlement for something that should've never happened. They should've been fired, terminated. He overrode the fire chief's decision. There was a cover-up. This, to me, is one of the most egregious acts by one of the hot, the, not one, the highest position in the city, which is that of the mayor. What do you tell children? And two lost their lives. I don't think any amount, I'm, I'm shocked that two hundred and twenty-five thousand is being given, but maybe Fire Chief Barton just wants to get it done with. This man, it went to wreck his career, questioned his credentials. It questioned what he had already retired from the city of Flint. It split his department in two, into black and white because the little boys were black. This divided our city, it divided the Flint Fire Department staff, all for a cover-up. I won't be supporting this. I don't know if my colleagues will because I think that in these children's memory, that someone has to say what's correct. I yield the floor.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'm sitting here and I'm reading this resolution and it says that Barton has accepted the city of Flint's settlement offer pending city council approval. Now, and then, I noticed that the resolution has not been signed. This resolution has not been signed. Okay? Um, that's kinda sketchy to me. Yeah, by no one. Not signed. But I cannot believe that former chief Barton is settling for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars after initially suing for ten million. I can't believe that. And I'm not gonna believe it because I'm not gonna vote for this. I need answers. I need to know. Why would he settle for this amount? This messed up his career. He was fired. Because he wouldn't cover up. He wouldn't cover up for the mayor. Now, something is not right with this. And I didn't go into executive session. I don't think I was even at the meeting on that particular day. But I will not be supporting this resolution. I won't be supporting it at all. I need, I need answers. So, it's kinda shady to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Ms. Winfrey Carter, those are my questions as well. And I just talked to the city attorney and I'm like, "Would it be improper to bring Chief Barton in here and, and before us and answer questions?"
Right.
And he seems to think it would be improper and I'm like, "Well, can I call him?" And again, he's thinking that that's improper and I, and I have to take his word at that. But I do have questions, like...
Yeah, I have questions.
Because to me, this isn't even, it's lost wages.
Yeah, it's not.
So, how is, how is, and I have questions to Ms. Burns's point is, okay, um, to my, to my knowledge, in, in the court hearings that I've watched, Neely lost his immunity on this and that's why it's going forward. So, uh, if he lost his immunity on this, why isn't it coming out of his paycheck, to her point, like it was Mr. Mays? So, I, I have serious, serious questions I wanna ask, ask Chief Barton. I wanna know why, um, why isn't this coming out of the mayor's budget and out of the suits and settlements? It should come out of the mayor's budget. It should come out of his paycheck. It should be garnished the way Mays was. I mean, I think Mays was garnished twenty-five thousand dollars. So, why, or maybe it could've been more, but to, that's to my knowledge or my memory. So, why isn't this being handled the same way? To your point, I think this is a huge cover-up and, um, if we just pay it and settle it and push it under the rug, what are the learnings? And I, to your point, I don't think there are any learnings. So, I, I don't know if I'm gonna support this today. I wanna hear from, um, our city attorney on the questions and, uh, Mr. Cups, if you can just get her, get the questions I asked you, just get confirmation from her, even though I, I see where you're coming from, if we can just confirm that through her, that he can't come before us or I can't call him to, to get some answers? If we, like, just put that bug in her ear, if you could.
I, I will confirm that with the city attorney.
But I a hundred percent agree, we're, we're, not agree necessarily, but understand where your thought process is, I do. Because it is, to me, this is unprecedented. I don't know that, is this the first time a mayor has been sued in the city of Flint where their immunity has been stripped and we have wanted to settle on a wrongful termination suit?
Just an initial note, I'm somewhat limited as to what I can address about this case in open session. I would note that it was discussed in closed session. The other thing I would note too, I just wanna make clear, is that this matter went to facilitation where a representative from the city was present, the facilitator, as well as former fire chief, Mr. Barton and his attorney, and this amount that's before you was agreed to by all parties, including Mr. Barton, and I'm assuming in consultation with his attorney at that facilitation.
Well, I, I, I understand that. But people make decisions under distress too. And, um, to me, based on the wrongs that were, uh, the wrongs that Chief Barton went through, to me, this settlement is, uh, it's not even below par. It's, it's like, his, his reputation was, um, tarnished. He lost wages and to me, this is low by any step, um, and I know I'm a fiduciary of the city, but we also have to make sure that we operate within the law and it's obvious that we didn't. I know this says that we're not assuming no liability. Well, if we're assuming no liability, then why are we paying anything?
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? I'm gonna take a few seconds on this and, um, based on what we heard in closed session and that it is a settlement agreement, who am I to go against what all parties agreed to? I'm not a negotiator. It's not my job to negotiate. If this is what the agreement was, this is what the agreement is. And it's clear in this resolution, it says settlement agreement. And our city attorney did agree, did say that all parties agreed to this sum. Do I, I think it's an absolute tragedy that the children died. I don't care whose fault it is, it's an absolute tragedy. And I feel for their parents. But I also know it's in the courts and I'm staying, keeping my nose out of it because it's in the courts and I have no business being involved. I wasn't a party to this at all. I'm not, I'm not in the fire department, I'm not an attorney. My nose needs to stay out of it and let the courts and work its way through and if it comes to us with a settlement, then if it's a settlement and all parties agree, I will approve that. So, I don't know what the desire is of my colleagues. The fact is, is that all parties agreed. And that's where I stand. And I'm in the middle of a lawsuit myself, suing on an auto accident. And so, we come to an agreement, we come to an agreement and I expect everybody to abide to it. If I end up less money than I wanted, so be it. That's my decision. And that's Mr. Barton's decision. Any discussion in the second round? Go ahead.
Uh, you two, Attorney Cups, so if an employee loses their immunity and, um, is there a reason why, why are we paying for this?
And again, I'm, I'm very limited as to what I can discuss in open session without violating attorney-client privilege. I would just note that, uh, I, I fundamentally respectfully disagree with some of the legal assertions that have been made this evening.
Okay, so which legal assertions do you disagree with?
Regarding the immunity issue.
Okay, so, and the, uh, did, it went all the way, was it in the Michigan, um, Court of Appeals? Where the qualified immunity, the judge did state that, um, he was not given qualified immunity, I believe. And that was public. It was in the news. And so, if he's not given qualified immunity, um, he was never, the mayor was never questioned or deposed on the record. Am I, am I correct with that? Uh, that's general, that was actually in the news article.
Well, this case is being handled by outside counsel, so I don't have
Oh, okay, is it Clark Hill?
Uh, no, the Williams firm, Kendall Williams.
Okay, okay.
And, and I would also, just one point of clarification, it went to the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. I, I yield the floor.
Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Okay, this
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, so, um, just wanted to just comment briefly on this, uh, on this resolution regarding the acceptance of this. I know that I have, um, a professional degree and it's not a, it's not a legal degree. And it is not my job to serve as a lawyer for this body. And so, it is important, you know, when we come across resolutions of this nature that discuss a settlement that has been agreed upon by all parties, for us to insert ourselves as if we were their counsel. And to operate as their counsel. Their counsel have spoke. And their counsel said that they want two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for their clients. And so, seeing that they want two hundred thou, and two hundred thousand, um, two hundred twenty-five dollars for their coun, client, excuse me. It's important for us to either vote it up or vote it down. But if you voted down, the same person who we're saying that we care so much for, we're messing with his bag. This is his money that he settled for. We can giggle, but I trust, we can giggle. But the fact is, this is the money that he agreed upon and this is the money that we should give him. There's no need to bring him before us. If we wanted to talk to Barton, many of us could've got his number and had the discussion when we come to work. When we had the closed session, we could've asked all the question that we desired, but when we opt out of the closed session, we opt out of that process. And so, what I don't wanna do, I don't wanna hold up this gentleman's money or even discuss this even further. Because if it was okay to discuss in open session, we wouldn't have to go back in closed session. But what can be discussed is that his, his parties, the city's party, came to the conclusion to pay him two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that is exactly what they're looking for, this body to either vote it up or vote it down. Through you, Madam, um, Chair, to the attorney. What if we don't vote this up, now what?
If, if it's not approved at this point, frankly, it's unprecedented, but I'm assuming that it would continue to go through the litigation process and the city would continue to pay, uh, the law firm representing it additional attorney fees beyond what's already been expended.
Okay, so we continue to incur more fees for no reason when they asked for us to settle? So, this will be very improper and very, um, I can't even think of the right word off the top. But this would be very irresponsible for us to pursue this any further when they said what they wanted. So, I will vote in favor of this, but this council is known to do unprecedented things, hence the violation of charter.
Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I think that we have somewhere in some of our comments lost focus on what we're supposed to be voting on right now. And the reason I wanna bring the focus back is because when we get off into all of the other stuff, it feels like pandering and it feels insensitive because there is a family going through an unimaginable pain. And they have their own, um, case in the courts happening right now. And so, because they've already taken what's happened to them and they're in court with that right now, and that is not what's in front of us, I don't want us to exploit what they're going through and what that feels like and how painful that is for a family. Speaking from someone who came from a family who experienced an exact same tragedy, it's not fair to the family to use what happened to them as potshots at the mayor. That's not okay. It's not okay.
Request for information.
Um, somebody's cheering right now because Judy moved, so it's either you or I.
Yeah, okay, so it's me. So, um, so, um, are, are you the councilperson who Councilwoman spoke about? Who said that they are, they said the, the family should've got a smoke detector?
No, she didn't say it was me. Absolutely not, I've had no conversations with Councilwoman Burns, no.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
That was super random, okay. So, but back to what I'm saying, what's in front of us now is, and again, when we talk about former fire chief, uh, Chief Barton, there is no doubt that that man had an excellent career and deserves respect. But when we start throwing out what could be misconstrued as, or, you know what? When we start throwing out blatant conspiracy theories of how did we go from ten million to this? And then act as though his counsel is leading him in the wrong direction. Obviously, somewhere within that, a trial, within the court, or whatever happened, attorneys came to an agreement. And I think that I agree in line with my colleague in the second ward of, we are prolonging a settlement that he agreed to. We are prolonging and using city dollars to grandstand on something that this person agreed to. I don't, I don't think that when, when we started talking about how do you go from ten million to this and, and all of this other stuff that gets thrown out there, it was a decision that he made with his attorneys. And we went into executive session, our attorneys advised us on the decision that was made amongst legal parties. And so, we can't sit here on this floor and start debating legalities when the only thing in front of us today is yes or no to a settlement that he agreed to. Let's not waste any further city resources arguing, pandering, grandstanding when it's already an agreement in place. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Is anyone here from HR? Nobody? I don't think, uh, so, I wanna go back to the learnings and what have we learned from this? What processes and procedures, Mr. City Attorney, have we put in place to, if, if, uh, Mr. Edwards refuses to lie for the mayor and he fires Mr. Edwards? What, what can we put in process so that this doesn't happen again?
And again, I don't have an answer for that, I'm not the attorney who's been working on this file.
Well, just in, in generalities, right? So, what can we do to put in process or place, um, so that this doesn't happen again?
And, and again, that's not something I can answer today. I haven't been working on this file, I don't have the information.
Two, I mean, no offense, Mr. Attorney, two minutes ago, you just said that you don't wanna talk about it because you don't wanna put client attorney privilege, but so, you don't know about the, the file, or you do?
Please be quiet. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure that we learn from this and we don't have another instance of this happening with this mayor, another mayor, or any other, like, at some point, because I know that over the years, we have settled a lot of wrongful termination suits. And they seem to keep coming back, but we don't change our process to make sure that we're doing stuff legit. So, I'm asking, and these are appointed people that serve at the pleasure of the mayor. So, what can we put in place to make sure that this does not happen again?
And again, I don't have that information sitting here today. I don't have that detailed level of knowledge about this case. It's my understanding that the proposed settlement agreement and release does contain a no admission of liability.
If it contains a no admission of liability, why are we here with the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? If we didn't do anything wrong.
And again, we're, we're continuing to inch closer to closed session, Chair.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm not, like, this is clearly, like, if, if we're paying, if the city is paying money, to me and, and everyone else, if the city is paying money, then, uh, common knowledge is probably the city is at fault. Otherwise, why would the city be paying money? That's just
Request for information.
General knowledge.
I'm just wondering, is this the first time that a resolution has been put before this body? Um, and specifically to you, Mr. Pfeiffer, where, there was a settlement that you didn't believe that we should have taken, but you still may have voted yes on? Even if we weren't admis, admitting guilt?
Every one of those is from employees that were fired, from people who are no longer here in the previous administration, so we had no recourse. So, I'm trying to figure out, what can we do to stop this from going forward in the next time? And there's no answer to that, so I yield.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion in the second round? I'll take my time. So, your question, Mr. Pfeiffer, has been, what can we learn? What have we learned? All of our other settlements have been with people who were fired or continued to be employed under previous administrations. So, um, what can you learn from a one instance? How can you fix that? Is, was it a justified? I don't know what the reason under firing was, I don't know, we just know the lawsuit. And so, this is what's before us, this is what we can do. And HR, hopefully, maybe they've tightened up some of their policies? I don't know. This is the only case where this is an issue. It's hard to learn from one case when it's a single issue and it's an appointed position and not a regular employee. And an appointed position is an at-will employee. So, um, well, that's, your question was, what did we learn? And I'm just trying to point that out, that there's, it's a different situation. So anyways, I'm done with, I'm yielding my time. This is the vote to send two five zero two two zero to council. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Machat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
No.
The vote is three yes, four no?
The vote is three yes, four no, that, or, three yes, four no, that fails. Going on. Next resolution I have separated is two five zero two two three, grant acceptance, Financial Recovery Technical Assistance, CS Mott Foundation, what is the pleasure of the body? Go ahead.
I'd send it to council.
Motion on the floor from the councilwoman in the second ward to send to council's chair is support. It's been supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, is there someone that can speak to this resolution?
Is there some, Mr. Moore, you're moving, come on up.
Good evening, sir. Can you share with me? Cause I, I'm, I was trying to read through the resolution and the attached documents to find out exactly what are we allowed to use this funding for?
It's mostly used for, uh, the hiring of staff, in particular in the, uh, Business and Community Services.
Which services?
Business and Community Services.
What does that look like?
That would be our economic development arm for the city. We have people there, uh, there are a couple, all the departments that have, uh, positions, but it's mostly in the, uh, Business and Community Services.
So, so does this support primarily payroll, or does it support all, uh, programming?
It's mostly payroll.
Mostly payroll. Uh, so payroll-related services, or just, you know, we, we take all payroll for that economic development group out of this fund sort of exclusively and free it up somewhere else?
That's correct.
Okay. And you said primarily, I believe,
Right.
Is there, what other, what discretion do we have around this fund?
When the grant was applied for, we gave an outline of what we were planning to spend the money for.
Okay, question. I don't see that in here. I, see, and that's, that's what I'm saying. This, this resolution references the, the approval of the grant request, but I don't see what that request was specified for. So, I, then now, we'll go to this question. And I, I don't know if you were here earlier, but when, uh, the gentleman was up, the officer was up around the training.
Correct.
And I said at that time, I'm gonna ask the question about if this fund can be used to provide that type of training? Because it just talks about technical assistance. So, I'm trying to understand the, the, the range
That would be outside the scope of this particular grant. However, the, uh, the concept that you, uh, mentioned was a, a good one. And, uh, uh, there, we did have, I did have a conversation, uh, with the person that applied for the grant after you made that comment. And, uh, that might be something that we've, uh, should explore. We might wanna apply for a grant just for the training that you mentioned.
So, but, but, just so I'm, I'm, I'm clear here now, am I to understand that this particular grant would not allow for that training?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and this, are we able, between now and the next time this comes before us, ma, maybe on Monday? Are we able to get, um, the scope of work from the application so we can see was, what it was requested for? From the grant, RFP, our proposal?
I could talk to the fellow that wrote the, the grant and see what I can find. I don't have that thought myself.
Is it, is it possible we can get a copy of what we actually submitted that's referenced in this document? I would appreciate that.
I'll, I'll back the request.
Thank you. Uh, I yield.
Yep, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So, specifically, you or, or someone submitted a budget for one point four million dollars and we got seven fifty? So, I would like a copy of that budget and obviously scaled down for the seven fifty we got.
Right, right.
Because, um, I'm not gonna vote on this until I know what the dollars are, are gonna be used for. Even though I appreciate the Mott Foundation giving us money, but, there's a checks and balances in, in this system for a reason. I wanna know how the dollars are gonna be used because this specifically states that we are, um, doing a budget amendment and we're also allowing for the appropriation, to whatever they wanna use it for. I wanna know what we're approving.
Okay.
Not gonna do anything blind anymore. Apparently, we got burned on that by, uh, sent, spending ARPA dollars for the senior service fund, or the senior centers, when we didn't know that that was gonna be what the dollars were gonna be used for. senior service fund, or the senior centers, when we didn't know that that was gonna be what the dollars were gonna be used for. So, uh, I wanna know exactly what positions, and are these going to supplement existing employees, or are we gonna hire new employees?
I don't, I believe it, it, just for the existing employees.
So this is not going to increase our full-time headcount?
That, that's correct.
Okay, make sure that whatever you submit says that as well, please.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Through you to the speaker, do you know the FTE for the Economic Development Group? And what their wages might be, because this has to be expended by June 26th?
Of 26th.
Of 26th, yeah.
Yeah, so nine months, right?
Yeah, uh, do you know what the FTE in that department is?
I do not, I do not.
If they'll spend 750?
Can you also?
It was in the budget.
So this is going to say, can you also give us a roundabout of? So if we're going to put this into the general fund to cover these full-time expenses, we already have that covered in the budget, so now, what are those dollars gonna be used for? Right, so if we, if we're doing a budget amendment to add 750 to the, uh, account to cover those, um, what, is there gonna be another budget amendment to take those dollars out and use somewhere else?
When we prepared the budget, we were pretty certain that we were gonna have, receive this grant, so we was, uh, I don't think we're, you're gonna see that we're gonna be making any cuts like that.
So you're saying that the budget that was approved, this account? Or this department is 750 in the negative?
Well, that department won't be in the, that, you're talking about the fund, not the department, but yes.
I guess I'm a little confused, Mr. Moore.
But this isn't, it isn't a separate, it'd be coming out, uh, the funds would, that would be spent would be, otherwise would be coming out of the general fund.
No, I get that.
Okay.
And then this is going into the general fund as well?
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I think I can, I know, I think I know where you're going from and where he's trying to go.
Okay, yeah, if you could bridge it.
Okay, so in the budget that we approved, that money for this grant was already taken out of general fund. So there would not be a budget transfer from general fund, because that money's not there.
I know, so what I'm saying-
So it's going to be a grant fund and not in general fund at all?
So, my question to you is, I hear that, so what you're saying is, we underfunded that by 750?
Probably, yes, because, yeah, that's-
Can you give me the account number that, for, or that department? And the full-time employees in that department? Because I don't think we underfunded any department by three-quarters of a million dollars.
I don't, uh, I, that's a, I don't think that's, uh, way of word that I don't think I can do that, but I can get you some numbers that I think will show you what you're looking for.
I'm gonna, I'll let him yield, Elliot, let him finish.
So what would happen if we didn't get this account, if we didn't get the 750? Do we have to lay people off?
If, if you remember the budget that we had, we had a, a gap between the, uh, the revenues and the expenditures. And we, and we didn't include any revenue for this grant, but we did have a gap there. That was the big issue during the, the budget, uh, negotiations. And that, this would have been part of that, this will fill that, part of that gap that we were talking about during the budget process.
I get that, that we, we had a revenue gap.
Right.
But the expenditures were still covered.
The, the rev, the, the, the revenues-
We had the expenditures covered.
We did not include any money in the budget for the, this piece of revenue, because we didn't have it.
Any other, that's all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on that one. Is there any other discussion in the second round?
Oh, we're in the second round?
First round, first round, so sorry, first round.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. So, the total amount for staffing was the 1.4 million, correct?
Right.
And then the 750 of the 1.4 is what the Mott, is what Mott's gonna cover, so they're gonna cover 750, right?
Right.
And then, if I'm understanding, the grant runs from July 1st of this year through June 30th of next year?
That's correct.
So that, it can be backdated then, right?
Yes.
For like the expenses, starting from July 1 of this year to June 30th of, um, next year. I just wanna make sure, oh.
Here's Seamus.
Can he approach, please, and thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Seamus.
I was, and I was just asking, Mr. Moore, if I understood correctly, that, uh, the total amount for all staffing is the 1.4 million, but the 750 is what Mott is gonna cover, and that this grant runs from July 1st of this year, 25, to June 30th of 26? And so expenses can be backdated, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry, I was dealing with a bit of a family emergency there, but yes, um, we have received this type of grant from CS Mott, I think this is the third inception of this grant. Um, we, all the positions there are grant-funded positions. So this offsets some of the costs related to those grant-funded positions. So for instance, in the Department of Business and Community Services, um, we have a deputy director, this will pay, I think about 40% of their salary. That's just one example of what it's gonna be used towards.
But it's, it's all, obviously all staff funding. And we're still in the first round, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll yield to the second round, cause I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can we have a list of the staff that will be funded under this grant?
Sure.
Um, and I think, um, you can send it to Davina and, um, she can make sure that each council member gets that, um, information.
Sure.
And also, I believe that it was asked that, um, we get the information of the initial grant application as far as what this, um, what these funds are gonna be earmarked for.
Which is the people we just talked about, yeah, sure, yeah.
So, yeah, so if we could get a list of those individuals who are, um, gonna be funded under this grant.
Certainly.
That would be appreciated.
Are you done?
I'm done, I'll yield.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Seamus, I hope I don't get another complaint, I need to ask a question, though. So, can you exactly tell us what positions, um, this is covering and the titles that are in this for this? Can you put that in there too? Just to kind of expand on what Councilman Winfrey Carter was asking. So the number of positions and what it is that they do. Now, what, what is their title? If you could do that to the city clerk, I would greatly appreciate it. Is this to go to, um, is it going to special affairs, or are we just sending it straight through? Yeah, okay. It's to send it to council, okay. Um, if we can have this by Monday, um, to the clerk, so that I would, um, we'll be able to have time to read it over the weekend. Um, are these, are there any new positions, or are this is already existing?
Existing positions, um, I think they're all currently filled too. Um, I, I, it's been a minute since I looked at it, but yeah, I think they're all currently filled.
Did you say, was it planning?
Yeah, so there's commu-, um, business and, how did, the, the, community, business and community services department. Um, I think there's a zoning coordinator has paid a certain FTE, uh, the deputy director of-
Now, we don't have a deputy director, she's over at the housing now, she quit, didn't she?
Tyler Bailey, Tyler Bailey.
Oh, Tyler, oh, this is Tyler's-
Yes, Tyler Bailey is deputy director in that department.
Okay, of that one.
That's to pay a certain percentage of his. Um, I think, uh, finance, there's a, yeah, I, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it over to you.
So this didn't cover Ashley's?
No.
And there was another one, I think, just quit too, or turned in a two-week notice, the gentleman, I believe. So these departments, we are shedding.
What's your request?
Uh, it is with the Flint Housing Commission. Um, I'll give you the other in person. So, um, if you, when will you be able to get this to us, cause that's-
I, I can send it as soon as I'm free from talking here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, so I'm gonna take a few minutes and try to back up. So, how much was the grant last year?
Um, it wasn't last year, it was about, oh, I think it was two or three, it was about two years ago? I think it was two years ago we received one. Um, that was the same, pretty much the same dollar amount.
Same amount, same dollar amount, so it's covering the same thing. So, we didn't get it last year?
We, no, we, we got it-
For, for, for fiscal year 25?
We got it two, two years ago, yeah, we got it two years ago.
Was it a two-year grant?
No, it was a, a year and eighteen, it was 18 months. But it, it ended, it ended at December 31, 2024. And, and I didn't write that one, but in writing this one, I thought it made more sense for it to line, align with our own fiscal year, rather than the calendar years, hence, we had that period. And, and just to note, this was mentioned a lot at the budget hearings. We did bring this up, that this is something that we applied for many a time, and
Yep.
we got the award letter the day where the budget was finally accepted, last year's budget was accepted, I got the award letter, we got it on council that night. So, so it's been there for a couple of months now.
So, this, so for the last six months of last year, we did not have this grant to cover the expenses?
Correct.
So we had it from January, or from, covered through July of December 31st of 2024? So, we do have, so I'm assuming that there is some general fund money. I'd have, we'd have to look at the budget, but there may be some adjustments in that general fund money to cover this grant if we only had six months. Or the money was in other grants, being transferred around?
Hence, hence doing it with the fiscal year, it got, became very messy trying to operate this on calendar years when we operate on different fiscal years, so. Just trying to make it much easier for accounting purposes, for finance when it comes to reporting.
I bet you Phil really likes that.
Yeah, well, his team does.
Um, so, I, my understanding is that the, all, all of Tyler's employees were all grant-funded?
Uh, I, I don't know, I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay.
I know a large portion of them are, a lot of portion of the staff in that community and business services, or business and community service department are grant-funded, correct?
Okay, and I, I was gonna look at, we just got the, um, thank you, Phil, for responding to my message that we hadn't received a, a, a financial report. And I appreciate that, um. So I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, and that's, and that's an area that we might wanna look at, is see where, what is left, what is in general fund money? And then we can have that answer. Okay, thank you. Um, is there any discussion in the second round? Go ahead.
So to be clear, I just wanna get this right in my head. We didn't get this last year, correct?
We, we, we got it for a period, we got it two years ago, but it covered us to the end of 2024. So it began, it, it was like 18-month period, so it's, it's began in 20, I'm trying to do the math, it, it ended in December 31st, 2024, the last one ended in December 31st, 2024. So, I could've, I could've applied for one that started January 1st.
So we got a six-month, if my math is right, basically a six-month where we didn't get any funds, right?
Off this specific grant, correct, yeah, correct.
From January until July or whatever this one, like, that is a void that we didn't get money for, correct?
Off this funding source, correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're clear on that. How many of these positions are fully funded by grant dollars? Or are, we saying that our full-time are going to be supplemented, or do we have people that are grant-funded 100% that are not part of our full-time employee count?
None of this will, none of this will cover anyone 100%, that's a stipulation. Mott aren't gonna cover a staffer at 100% on this grant. So it covers a certain percentage of FTE.
So, so, I know that, cause we have employees that are full-time employees that are in part of our count, and then we have another group of people that are grant-funded that are not part of their full-time employee count, correct?
I, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand that, can you rephrase it, please?
So, on our, on our budget, or whatever, we have a list of every department that are full-time employees? Correct?
Yes.
So, we also have employees that are not employees, we have grant-funded positions that are not included in that group, is that a correct statement?
I think all the employees are in that list.
Even if they're 100% grant-funded that we no longer have grant dollars for, they're included in that dollar, cause I don't think they are.
Well, if, if they are funded for the budget, they're included in the count. So, if the, if they-
Excuse me. That's not our concern. Go ahead.
If, the list of employees that you received, that included all the employees, including the, the positions that were grant-funded?
I, but, my point is, is we didn't have this grant, so if this grant wasn't included in the budget, then those employees shouldn't have been included in the budget then, right?
If-
I know I'm probably confusing you, but I'm just trying to make sure that this is for full-time employees and it comes off the general budget, this isn't going to come off of a, uh, grant-funded position that we don't know about. You follow what I'm saying, Seamus?
Yeah, that's, it's not, it's not gonna cover any other grant-funded, like, grant money.
Okay.
It's not gonna cover any other grant money, no, you're, that's a fair, yeah, I can say yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you for allowing me to finish.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round?
So when will we get the inform, Madam Chair, through you to, uh, Seamus? When will we get the information that we need as far as, um, this resolution?
Yeah, I can, once Davina puts in a request, I can get that to you as soon, as a response straight away.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we send this resolution, um, 250223 to special affairs.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the fifth ward, supported by the councilman in the eighth ward, to send this resolution 250223 to special affairs, this is the vote.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Seamus.
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, zero no?
Vote is seven yes, zero no, that will go to special affairs. And our next resolution is 250240, change order extension, Michigan Fence Company, Flint Police Department Security Fencing. Amendment of resolution number 240447, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to send it to council.
There's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the sixth ward, to send to council, is there any support? It's supported by the councilwoman in the fifth ward, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
That was Councilman Pfeiffer, uh, Fence Company, Police.
Do you have a discussion on the fence?
Yep. Separation. Uh, could you have, um, Detective Sergeant Booth, um, through you to-
Detective Booth?
I'm gonna, um, yield the floor, because I know this was his, he separated it and he had questions.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you tell me what number we're on, I'm sorry?
We're on 250240.
I just wanna know what the change order was for, because last time when we approved this, it was gonna be card access, it was gonna be closed all the time. last time when we approved this, it was going to be card access, it was gonna be closed all the time, and it's been like, done for like a year, and nothing, like, so what are, what exactly is this change order for? And are we going to get into it being a secure lot at some point?
So, so yes, um, we completed the first project, which, which was installing a gate around the entire perimeter on the backside of the complex. There was some discrepancy, um, where the thought was that the project was done, so we had to, and, and when they found out, when we found out that it wasn't, we had to resubmit because, um, it, the purchase order wasn't sent to the vendor to schedule the appointment for the actual card access, um, and, uh, motorized system to open and close the gates. So, now this is what that, it's coming back to you for.
This is strictly to motorize the gate and add card access to that?
Yes, sir, so then-
And, and that was never part of the original RFP that was bid?
No, the, the first, we did it in two sections, we did the gate first, and then we came back to do the motorized portion of it.
Now, are we also adding card access to the manual walking, uh, through fairs, like the, I know there's a separate gate down there for that, and then, like, on this wall right here, you can jump over the wall, so, like-
Correct.
How, how are we gonna make this a secure lot and just not for looks?
You had to point that out. So, yes, you're correct, so, the, uh, my, my suggestion will be to place a gate across that, that section.
Across the-
Where the steps are.
Okay.
Yes, uh, the other option-
That is not included in this?
No, the other option is to remove the, um, the steps, but I wanna approach that in a different way, um, through, 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 uh, building maintenance. Or put up a gate.
So, this is turning into a money pit?
It, it, it is costly to, to properly secure a space like this, because we're trying to come behind the curb and, and design a, a functioning system for an old complex. Uh, if the building was designed new, it'd be totally different, but it's kinda tough to, to properly provide security, and adequate security, for an old building with so many access points. So, it, it, it is timely.
I, I get, so why, if we know that if we know that we have to do this much more work, why not bring it back again in one package?
I, I think that, um, the gate itself is an easy fix.
Different vendor?
Yes, uh, Michigan Fence Company.
So, circling back to my, are we not going to have a card access at the, uh, the sidewalk entrances?
The side, there's only one entrance for the sidewalk, and there is a system, a push-button system on that gate that automatically locks it. Uh, so the only correction that needs to be made on that portion of it is to either take out the stairwell, or put up a gate across that section. But there is a push-button system on that gate, the entry gate.
Cause there's a gate right next to the ramp, right?
Correct.
And that's the one that you're talking about, it's already got the gate, and you're saying that that's got a, it's got a push-button, meaning it alerts somebody that you're there?
There's, no, there's a locking system on it that you can only enter if you know the code.
So, so it's a, it's a manual code?
Push-button code, yes.
Okay, I was thinking like, it's a lock and you can't get in there, like, so if somebody parks over here and for some reason wants to get over there, they would have to drive through, but you're saying there's a push lock?
There's a push-button lock system that they can, yes.
That makes, that makes more sense.
Yes, sir.
And then we're gonna work on getting a quote to, so people can't jump over the wall? The ramp going down into the garage?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Pfeiffer, your time ran out, I just didn't, I pushed the button before the bell rang, but your time is up, sorry.
I don't trust you.
Come on now.
Thank you, Detective.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, is there any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Is there any discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, that fence, did you see the video? Where they showed how compromised, they were walking around the back lot, where the gate is, the stairs going down, and so this project is going to be a lot more extensive. I don't know, have you seen that one?
Yes, so, that, that, the only entry point would be where, uh, uh, the gentleman just discussed, is the, uh, stairwell that leads down that brings you up on the other side of the locked gate. If that system was in place, they could get, entry could be made to the courtyard itself, but you can't access the back of the police building or the parking, underground parking structure that comes up.
Yeah, the parking structure, I know underground was fine, they didn't, well, unless the one comes, you know, the garages go up, but they were literally like, they were there.
Yes, so that's not the focus point in terms of security.
So, you're just trying to say that they, walking they can come, but driving a vehicle, they cannot?
Right, and, and once this correction is made, they won't be able to walk through the gate unless they have a push-button code as well.
I'm talking about the other gate that's down, cause you got the, the little gully of the-
Yep.
Down there, and so this is where, and it's a gate right there, where they just said, hey, you just walk around, literally, they showed where it was compromised, so have, has any estimates been given, or, um, has, has this been put out, or the thought to get it, I mean, cause if you're securing, and the issue was people walking through, um, going, opening up the car doors and vandalism, we still kinda have that problem for the walkers. Only, I think we're stopping the driving, but we're not stopping the walkers.
No, the, the completion of the project, once the gate system is installed with the motorized mechanical system-
That's going across.
That will ca- that will eliminate the ability to get into the lot from that portion, from the east side of the parking lot.
Right.
Now, the walking portion, that's where we're saying, um, my suggestion is to eliminate the stairwell that comes up, which would stop people from being able to walk right back into the other side, or to put up a small six-foot section of gate to, to alleviate. Yes.
Not the nice, don't we have a, a ordinance, does that apply to us, that it has to be ornamental, it has to be, um, ornate?
No.
Does that, does that apply?
You mean, like a pretty gate, a pretty fence or something?
We have pretty fencing, shouldn't it match?
Well, yeah, it will match, I mean, yeah, so that, it will match the existing gate.
So, that's what I'm saying, is it going to match, okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so we can be looking for something else to come up for that second part, either the stairs or fencing or something, it's, it's gonna have to be addressed.
Well, again, that's a small, that's a small correction to be made, and that, that may be able to be handled through maintenance as well. That's a simple fix.
Alright, thank you. Is there any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Okay, this is the vote, send two-five-zero-two-four-zero to council.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mishap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis? Is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no, that will go to council on Monday, and I believe I will, let me share, you sure?
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, uh, motion to adjourn has been made, is there support? I'll sup- Supported by the councilwoman in the seventh, fifth ward, uh. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mishap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer's not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yep.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no, this meeting is adjourned at nine oh eight.
Somebody dressed him. He got jeans on. Librium on. Little lady brick. She take care of him.
It's fine. Yep, the time is now whatever time it is. Nine fourteen PM on Wednesday, August sixth. I hereby call this legislative, cause it's gonna be a chair rein, chair out. I hereby call this legislative committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mishap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
And, Mr. Pfeiffer, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
You have seven members present?
You have seven members present. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one dash ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery in disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest, violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for changes or additions, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the city council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is R.L., R.L. Mitchell.
Legislative, cause it's chairing, you're out.
Yeah, we ain't get out, we gotta let him speak. Okay. Hello, city council, my name is R.L. Mitchell. And I'm wanting to address this unprecedented city since, thanks to the mayor nearly downstairs, uh, about this situation in, in Flint, we got about these popos, popo gang, the police gang, you just heard the little boy, he's a boxer. He got kidnapped and got put in the bullpen for three days, and, and then he come in here, and then, I knew that was gonna happen sooner or later, cause it happened to me, me first, about, cause when I was on, walking from Burton back to my house, that was about eight miles from my church to back to my house on, over on Mute Street. And, I walked there, I had a Bible on my hand, the popo pulled me over on that street by Hammy Brothers, where that little Vietnam woman with the, eating spaghetti, uh, down there, you know where that, with the bricks, you know, still, he pulled me over, and he opened the back door, the police guy, and pulled a gun up, he said, hey, sir, get in the car. I said, man, what the? And then he, he had a gun, I said, I walked away from the dude, he could've pulled the trigger. I guess he didn't even have no camera on, I walked away. And now you see what happened to the, to the, the boxer, the little kid come up here talking, and he got kidnapped, and, and now this popo come up here talking about, he educated four, um, four, forty officers without Chief Green permission with that technology junk, and y'all going for it, talking about assault rifles on the chest, walking, and then come down here spraying people with bear spray with the dockies, and they ain't, and they ain't doing nothing about it. And you, and peoples over on Troy Highway talking about the water, it eagles, the eagle talking about, hey, they, they ain't no messing with us because this, cause you not, you, union, we done all this work without union, this is a union city. Sixteen hundred and Sam down there, and y'all act like Sam don't possess, and, uh, and Ms., Ms. Priestley, she started it all, with her, with her little nephew, what, talking a little she ain't gun in here, and think that, and nobody ain't gonna do nothing about it. He just got the guts not to pull, he know how to be intelligent with it, not spraying everybody, like them, popo coming out, shooting everybody up on pass, oh, with it, war two be riding in Flint every day, talking about, it's good to have a rifle range in the, oh, fire, fire chief station. You know what I'm talking about, Tarzan, kind of boy come up there, I'll be back, come spraying up the neighborhood, nobody doing nothing about it, and all that stuff, in Flint, and you think somebody is, uh, and then over on the, the other side of the town talking about, okay, seven, six seconds, and then- And then, and look here. Oh, stay tuned, America, you gonna see how we gonna get up. And the lawyer talking.
Thank you, next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Get that dude over there.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
How's it going, uh? Candace, you made a statement that it was unprecedented, that a settlement was not accepted. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, Genesee Towers, they had a settlement and they wouldn't settle and it cost the people of the city thirteen million dollars. And I think it was one lump sum, excuse me, uh, we can talk, I mean, if I was wrong, you can tell me right now. I mean, I know they had to pay a one-time tax assessment of five hundred and some odd dollars. Now, like I said, you can straighten it out if you like, but if I'm not mistaken, uh, it was a settlement and, uh, they got thirteen million dollars. Uh, another thing you said, taking pop shots. Those are not pop shots. Nearly did lie. Nearly did say it's political suicide. Nearly did try to cover it up. Nearly keeps on doing corrupt stuff. You enabled him to do corrupt stuff. Council people voting, putting money in their own organizations, five oh one C threes, that's corrupt too. But to say that it's pop shots because a council person is saying what happened and that nearly asked Chief Barton to lie. You wasn't on council at that time when Chief Barton came up here and actually said what happened. You wasn't up here when Liddell got up and walked out on the family. And, but she had come back to say she didn't walk out. Councilwoman Carter had called for the count and she was standing right there behind her chair. I will bring the video if she lie this time. You know you did it. Yes, you did. You did it. I had played the video over and over and over because you didn't have any care in the world when Crystal was standing up here talking about her child, her two kids dying in that fire on Pulaski Street. You stood up and walked out because they got to screaming at you on your way out. So it's not pop shots telling the truth about a cover-up that Mayor Neely tried to do. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Mari Copney.
Okay, so like, it's looking like kinda crazy that I like, I'm still here, cause like, I mean, I could be in my bed right now, you know, watching YouTube or playing still a burner with my sister on Roblox, but you know, I'm standing right here and even though there's literally like not that many people in the crowd, I, I could care less, I'm directly speaking to the council people, like directly to y'all. Um, you know, it's, you know, it just, it just really, 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 really frustrates me when my sister is up here talking and you know, certain people just decide to not even look up when she's speaking. And you know, y'all can ignore me and do that with me, like y'all can do that when I'm speaking, but don't do that to my little sister, she's just thirteen. Don't do that, it's extremely disrespectful. And you know, it's even crazier and you know, I think I'm like directly calling you out, Judy, so I would appreciate if you actually would like look at me instead of looking down, look, look up again, you can, you can use your eyes, alright, we're being slow again. But anyways, um, so personally, you know, you told me to stay in the child's place, well, you told me to stay in the child's place in that I basically had to respect you. I have zero respect for you actually, and I feel like, I feel like, I feel like I shouldn't have any respect for you, like you, you are so disrespectful. And, oh, Liddell, you're sitting over there laughing, oh, I, oh, I have zero respect for you either, and that's the crazy thing, you laugh, you, you're laughing about this, I'm, I have no respect for you either, like, like what is so funny, like I'm confused, like is this funny to y'all, like do y'all like being scolded, like, like are y'all into that, like, are y'all getting wet from that, like I'm confused. I'm confused, like y'all must love, y'all must love getting insulted, right? 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 So, I don't know, man.
Please pause her time, what's your point?
I don't know, man.
Please pause your time, what's your point?
I know, man, that's not crazy.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, what's your point?
I, I think that's crazy.
What did she say, I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, I won't say, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for that joke. I'm sorry, I'm so, I'm sorry, Liddell, I'm sorry.
So, what I will do is, um...
Okay, okay, can I, can I continue talking pretty please, pretty please? Please, 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 please?
That was...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I'm, I'm waiting for everybody that thinks that you're gonna direct this meeting to stop talking.
Oh, got it.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty please. I'll be nice. I didn't, I, I didn't cuss, sorry.
Wait a second.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you, you were saying?
Madam Chair.
Well, first Councilwoman Priestley, then you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman. Fully inappropriate, um, as of a sexual nature.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, so she, she made the comment about, um, something making us wet up here, so that goes along with our council rule that speaks about vulgarity.
So, okay, hold on one second, what we're not going to do, because the young lady knew what she said was wrong and has already apologized, we don't need to keep interrupting while they're speaking. You have no idea whether or not you are messing up my ruling because you keep speaking. I could have been ready to let her to continue to speak, but because you keep speaking, we can't get to a ruling. Go ahead, Doctor Lewis.
Yeah, so I just wanted just to highlight and to be, be very specific with the comment about, um, making one quote unquote wet and the sexual nature, how that goes against our vulgarity rule, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Copney?
Yeah.
You recognized immediately what you said was wrong and apologized immediately.
Mm-hmm.
You have forty-three seconds left.
Okay.
Watch it. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, but, um, no, I just, I just, just find it like extremely disrespectful that like y'all can sit up there and like ignore when the youth is speaking and when people in general are like bringing like serious issues to y'all and y'all are like passing it as a joke and not really taking it serious. And I don't like how y'all take small things serious, but y'all don't take the big thing serious. It's kinda, it's kinda backwards and I'm not, I'm not understanding it, so you know, can, can we please fix that? Uh, cool, okay.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Michaela Terry.
Hi, my name is Michaela Terry and this is my second time speaking at this circus, I mean, oops, council meeting. And I would just like to tell all y'all, I mean, all y'all, you know who I'm talking to, to stop clowning around. And I have something to play for y'all. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Leon Lawson the third. Is he still here?
How y'all doing? It was a topic, like, so I had spoke again because it was a topic, um, and another thing too, I don't know like much about this meeting, but I will say I would like to meet you guys individuals, if y'all would take the time out to, you know, actually meet with me. But it was a topic, I do wanna make sure that I do make sure that it's known that it's a, it's a, it's a very common occurrence of this happening, like, um, like nothing, nothing against you, uh, Liddell, but it just seemed like when you had said it, it was like, it was an isolated situation, but I'm not gonna lie, like this continues to happen, like P F I cases, like where they just arrest people like me consistently, I'm talking about charging them with false charges and then P F I the case where it's no charges, but basically kidnapped them for three days straight, not, no shower, no hygiene, no shower, sleeping on a metal bench, metal floor, and these regular people, regular people that don't even have no charges, nothing even be charged with. So with that being said, there gotta be something done with that, like, and it, it needed to be investigated to see like what's the rates of P F I cases, cause if y'all don't have, if the police department don't have nothing to charge nobody with, that nobody should be getting arrested, you know what I mean? That's, that's very, very, very stressful and anybody that have been in the county will attest to that. And I'm pretty sure the officers in the back, definitely that's one of their strategies to basically throw false charges, arrest them for three days, swept under the rug. Like this situation here, I didn't even know it was that big of a deal, I just, I just dealt with it. When I had got out, that's when they had told me like, oh, this is a big deal. The whole time, I knew it was wrong, but I didn't know that it would have a light on it, but my name alone is what put the light on this situation. And it had to be addressed, addressed and fixed. Um, like I said, next time I come, the next few times I come, I'll be way more prepared. And I think I like politics, so I think I'm gonna have to get a mic to adjust to be able to raise up a little higher for them, you know? Thank you all.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Deborah Coleman.
Um, I came back up here again to speak because, um, I feel some type of way that this gentleman, this, I'm not, I'm not even gonna call him a gentleman, cause he's not a gentleman. The police in the back, I don't understand why would he be here when he was one of the people that had something to do with the false charges of putting Leon in jail. This guy, I don't understand, I know y'all seen these videos. I know y'all seen these videos and this guy said some racist stuff, I don't understand why y'all don't understand that he's not good out here to be a police officer. I wish y'all could hear this. Hold on, this is what he said. Okay, well, he said, the, the dude in the back, right there, he said seventeen bodies dropped last week in a place like this. It was nothing but black people standing over there. He's racist. And I feel when we came in here, y'all probably didn't know we were all gonna show up, but when we, we all showed up, y'all should have told him he had to go and get another officer to come in here. to come in here. I had to go home and go take a, a, a anxiety pill, because I took one before I came, cause I didn't, wasn't for sure if they was gonna be here. But then, once, they kept saying that was him, and I kept saying, no, that ain't him, that ain't him. And when I went back to pull up the video, it was him. I, I, that, that, that's not acceptable. I don't even know the guy's name, I don't know. And then, he got his cam on today, he didn't have his cam on the other day. So, something needs to be done. And y'all kept, y'all saying Eternal Fairs is looking at this, we don't even have an Eternal Fairs in Flint, Eternal Fairs is in Lansing, and they only service Lansing police officers. So, Eternal Fairs is not around here, it goes to the Flint Police Department. And we already know, they not finna do nothing, they not finna do nothing. And then, uh, I'm looking at y'all, everybody spoke but you and the lady with the casket lipstick on. You're not right, cause you didn't speak, you're glad that it happened. You been looking at everybody, trying to catch somebody, cause you really want to tell them, put them out, put them out. I've been watching you. And you didn't say nothing, you not appalled how they did your people? You know what I'm saying? Yeah, look up in the sky all you want to. That's crazy. When I tell y'all, that's crazy. That's crazy. And something needs to be done, but I'm gonna tell you what, guess what? I ain't stopping. I don't care about Flint Police and all of that, I ain't stopping. I'm going over all y'all, all of here.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Leon Lawson II.
Hello, counsel. I just want to say, um, I want to make it clear, that we most definitely aren't against police. We appreciate police and police presence, when they're doing their job correctly, you know, and when they're policing correctly, you know? What happened Saturday night, would've never happened in Grand Blank, it would've never happened in Frankenmuth, Fenton, or anywhere else. What happened in Flint, Michigan, should ha- shouldn't have happened nowhere. So, this should never be overlooked, you know what I mean? We want to make sure that this, you know, and, and we gonna get to the bottom of, of everything. I, I would like to know this officer's name. Is that, is that okay? What's this officer's name back here? Can somebody tell us, what's your name, officer? With the phone up to your ear, what's your name, officer? No, 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 not you, you weren't there that, I didn't see you. This officer here, what's his name? Got you. Got you. We want to know who, the one that assaulted.
All right, excuse me, sir, sir, can you direct your comments to our counsel?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can you tell me his name? You don't know him, okay, got you. We know all officer ha- we know all officers have tough jobs to do. I get it. You know what I mean? But, they, they, number one thing that they should be able to do, is assess a situation quickly. It wasn't violent there, it wasn't hostile, they were the one that brought the hostility. Not cool. A, a officer should never be emotional. You know, and, and, and like, like Deborah said, you know, he didn't have his body cam on, none of those officers that assaulted us did. They didn't even, not turned on, they didn't, they wasn't wearing them. We got, we got pictures and videos, but they're not even wearing them. He got his, he got his camera on tonight, though. Why you didn't have him on there when you was out? And he's so quiet back there. He was so voiceful that night. You know? We'd love to meet that energy if we on an even playing field. You know, mano a mano, man to man. So, if he really want that, some real smoke, we invite it. Man to man, though, we don't want to be gunned down, or maced up. If you want to put hands up, we'll do it. Feel like some off a Training Day movie, in my, in my city. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Good afternoon, my name is Tanya Jones. As Liddell say, question, is it Flint Township? Oh, you got questions, you can ask me personally, but you got, I screenshot it, so all, everything you had about me, I screenshot it, Liddell. Then you deleted it. But, let me tell you about, let me tell you about the opiate crisis, that you take the money and move it around, it don't take just one Norcan, sometimes it take one box, two box, three box, that I got from downstairs. And also, the fentanyl patches, cause it could be your family, it could be your child one day, I promise you that. It's not exempt, this, this what's going on with this opiate crisis, it's real, it's everywhere. And I'm not going nowhere, my son right now is missing, I did a missing person report, and I'm not going nowhere. I'm not going nowhere. The last stop, guess where is, the city council? Cause y'all want to move money to the police and get a po- training, training, y'all need some adept training, y'all need some real training. It's not no watch TV, do no video, it's not that simple. My son is autistic, autistic, he was born autistic, that's my gift from above, that's from God. He's gay, and he's my son. And I'm gonna come out here and speak on it, he's been on meth, he's been on opiates for six years. I'm thinking it's a sickle cell crisis, cause he got four blown sickle cell. So, can't nobody up here tell me, when I see y'all moving money around to these people that need it, I'm his voice, but what about the people that don't have voices? That's what I'm concerned about. If God called my child home, guess what? I'm still gonna be here. If I'm a beast right now, what you think I'm gonna be, if something happened to my child out here? So, let me tell you what happened to me today. Flint Police came out today, to where he live at, looking for him. You know why? Because I'm out here. But they went to the wrong address, they didn't go to where he at, when I put the police report, they went looking for it. Oh, they so, they so concerned about Mike. But guess what, God gonna find Mike, no matter what? At the end of the day, I know, I'm a great mother, I'm a dead, he's 31 years old, but he's mine, he's mine, and I'm never gonna give up on him. And Judy, you don't care, Candace, you don't care, he went to church Ebenezer with you, you know my son, before he got addicted out here. You got to watch the company you keep, my son didn't grow up in Flint, Michigan, I took him away from here. But he came back, you gotta watch the company that he keep, he's a follower, people use him, a girl took $800 from him right now, it ain't about the money, it's about my son's life, it's about everybody else's suffering, it's about their life, and guess what? I'm gonna be the voice, I'm gonna help whoever need it, guess when I get calls, people ask how you do it, you know how I do it? It's God. It's God, I'm standing here right today, you know what? Because God is real, y'all speak it, y'all talking, but I walk it. And my son is a living testimony, no matter what journey to see it, his journey is my journey. And y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Lola Durrell.
Hello, everybody. I first want to say, that I think, you know, everyone up here should have had, I'm here for my brother, of course, and my nephew, I think every one of you should have something to say about the situation that happened with him, and you sit there not saying anything, that just doesn't look good. And I appreciate the ones who spoke up on it, I really do. So, and then, another thing, um, I had to put it in notes, because it's so much to say, but I know it's only a little time. First off, they came in with the sirens, I'm not sure what that was for, and then repositioned to be super loud and assault, everyone that was there got assaulted with their sirens and lights, everyone. And after that, since that didn't work, and they got frustrated, because my nephew put up his hands and did that, um, then they got out to arrest him, push my brother, they never could've did that just regularly off the street, it just wouldn't have ever happened. But, since they were law officers, um, my, we were raised right. You know, I know some people weren't, it's okay, some people weren't, that's just their parenting skills, that's on them, not ours. We were raised right. And, for them to do that, it was just so disgusting to see that tape, I just really don't even believe it, even now. So, to those officers, just remember, you have family, you have family out here, you know, and I don't wish anything bad on anybody, but you have family out here, just remember that. And while you hold your head down, that, that's a good thing, though, maybe you have some type of remorse, hopefully, but that's it. You know, I just needed to say that, and just to let y'all know my frustrations, I don't know what you can do, or if anything can be done, but they don't need to be on the force, because they are not for the people of Flint, they're racist, spraying them like they were bugs, and I know that's what the conversation was in the car, you see us, you see me spraying them, you know, I can just imagine what the conversation was about, you know, totally racist, it's not even a question to me. So, that's all I have to say, you all enjoy your night.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Lanice Lawson.
Hi, everyone, hi, council. Um, I just, of course, I'm here in support of my family, and I was one of the ones who were assaulted that night, um, for apparently no reason. There was no disturbance, there was no arguing, fighting, anything. I don't understand what warranted the aggression that we were met with, we, we were barbecuing, it wasn't any fighting, or, like I said, anything like that. So, I, I would like to have some answers as to the, um, the bully tactics that we were met with, it was so much aggression, so much testosterone and violence, um, and that's not a way to police, um, citizens of Flint. I feel like it was a blatant disrespect and disregard for the citizens of, of Flint that night, again, unwarranted. And also, I was just wondering if there is a curfew, I'd like to know that, because that would help us, you know, in the future. There's no curfew downtown? Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that. Um, so, I'm not sure, again, why we were, we were being told to leave, um, with, and there's no curfew. That, they were spraying indiscriminately into the crowd of people, was probably, I don't know, maybe like 20 people, there, they were spraying into the crowd, and so often, my daughter, my, my 10-year-old daughter, stand up, Blackly, is with us, as we serve the people. And so often, my 81-year-old mother is with us, when we serve the people, she comes down to help, she was just there the day before downtown with us. And I, I, from what I hear, some of the officers who were involved in this, slammed a 72-year-old elderly person to the street the other day, I pulled him out of a car and slammed him to the street. If my mother was there, I don't know how that would've turned out, spraying my mother with mace, or my daughter with mace? That, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not okay now, but it really, it would, it could've went left really fast, so, um, that was another thing that I wanted to address. And then, um, also, like my brother was saying, these tactics and the way that they police in the city of Flint would never be tolerated, in, like he said, Fenton, Flushing, Grand Blank, Frankenmuth, it wouldn't be tolerated, so I, I don't, I would like to understand why it's okay and acceptable here, in the city that we were born and raised in. People come from the suburbs, and come into the city of Flint and police like it's the 50s. Spraying, it's reminiscent of water hoses being sprayed onto a crowd of people in the 50s, it's no different. And it's disgusting, I'm disgusted, I'm saddened, and it's really weighing heavy on us and traumatic.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Willie Brown III.
How y'all doing today? I'm standing before y'all, but I'm really directing this, I'm really directing this behind me, but I'm standing before y'all, and everything is sounding so much like a lecture, I just want to know if we can have some kind of dialogue right now. I took my daughter home, she was here, she wanted to speak too, but a couple weeks ago, we were coming out of Sweetwater, and officers pulled up as we came out, and she has sensitive ears, and they hit the sirens. And soon as they hit the sirens, she grabbed both her ears and started screaming and crying, and, and I'm a law Biden citizen, but it took a lot for me not to throw a brick through the window at this officer, it, it almost didn't matter what happened to me, because she was standing there crying, holding her ears, and the crowd told me, take your daughter, Will, before they separate you from her daughter. But I really wanted to attack the police officer, and I would've been in jail, and I, I didn't do anything wrong, she's eight years old, she wanted, she wanted to talk herself, but I had to take her home, and I came back myself, but, it was totally unnecessary. I just want to know, what, at what point is a siren an assault? At what point is that an assault? Because if you got somebody holding their ears, screaming and crying, it's definitely hurting her. So, it, it's an, it's assault, that's a real assault, I felt, I felt like I almost need to take her to the hospital, you know? I mean, I don't know what's gonna change, I don't know what's gonna change, but I, I do, I, I would like for them to, 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 to let this dwindle down, the rest of the officers, so they can notice, this, this, that's really assault, you can't just pull up on people like that, and assault them like dogs, we just coming out the restaurant, and they were like, maybe five feet from her, and, you know, I, hey, now you know, that's all I'm saying, is now you know, this is what's going on, it just didn't seem right at all, I know it's not right, but, um, that's all.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Ms. Pollard.
Good evening. Um, I haven't been here in a minute, my spirit wanted me to come, but right now, I'm motion for your daughter. I'm gonna keep praying for her, that it get better. Well, I gotta say to all y'all, it's only four of them that's been hatin', but it's only three here, you guys are so ignorant to me, because how we know that y'all three don't give a damn about nobody here in Genesee County or Flint, because you're always down looking down, either on your phone, texting each other, you don't pay attention to nobody, what they say, so that's how we feel about y'all, it's nothing personal against you, but y'all show like y'all don't give a damn about nobody here in Genesee County, that mean all people here. And then, I feel like it's racism, cause I've been watching the videos late at night, I don't come on none of, nobody's stuff, but I seen that, that broke me down, cause my cousin was on the sidewalk, when he was choking, he's still in hu- in the hospital right now. His sister called me and tell me, he still got an asthma problem with his breathing, but y'all don't give a damn, y'all don't give a damn. And then, y'all had the nerve to talk about this, um, 17, them police officers shouldn't have said nothing about them 17 killing whatever happened on that day. That's not nothing to talk about, cause it could be your family, your family, and Candace, yours. Y'all should have some kind of sympathy, and feel sorry for people going through this. Y'all say, you always quote, especially you, uh, Judy, and, and, and Liddell, and Candace, y'all always say, y'all for the people. How? When we talk up here, y'all laugh among each other, y'all make smirk mouth, y'all say stuff smart, y'all tell us to respect y'all, when, when y'all talking up here, but when Dennis and this guy was talking, Judy, you and her, you and Liddell was making a whole conversation, so, how you gonna tell us to stop talking, when you running your mouth? So, at the end of the day, we need to remove some more of y'all off them chairs, cause y'all don't give a damn about us. You don't care about the kids, because y'all do y'all dirt on Facebook, y'all put my name in Facebook, so that's why I'm here, cause see, like I told you, you know where my address at, you know it, you know it, come down to my county, come do that down there, baby girl, and I'm gonna show you what I'm gonna do to your ass, see, I can't do nothing to you here.
Please stop her time, that's already not going.
Okay, well, I apologize on that part, but I'm gonna tell her.
No, please stop her time, that's already not going.
Say what? But at the end of the day, it doesn't even matter.
Please stop her time, that's already not going.
Well, stop it, just stop it, you not gonna hurt me, you hate the, you hate the truth.
You no longer have the floor, you no longer have the floor. You no longer have the floor. Point of order.
What is your point?
Due to the fact that she threatened me, uh, yeah, I'm, yeah.
You threatened me? You threatened me?
Again, inviting me, this is the order that we're talking about, inviting me to come out there and fight, talk about what she do to me.
That's not no threat.
I'm just sitting here, this is a threat, or, or a promise, whatever that was.
That's not no threat.
Ms. Pollard, Ms. Pollard.
Okay.
She is taking that as a threat, I was not, I cannot finish.
Finish?
I was not gonna take the floor from you for cussing, but she said that she took that as a threat, I'm gonna have to ask you to have a seat.
Okay, that's fine, but it wasn't no threat, but she threatened me on Facebook, but you ain't saying nothing, Candy.
I, I don't, I don't get into all that Facebook stuff. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Right, it's funny now, though, it's funny, though, right? You just mad about telling the truth, y'all scary.
That was the last public speaker.
Thank you. Seeing as how that was the last public speaker, it is now time for council response, council members may respond to one, once to all public speakers, only after public speaking, speakers have spoken, individual council members' response should be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like the floor during council response?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Councilman in the eighth ward, you have the floor.
First and foremost, I didn't, I didn't get your name, the, the gentlewoman who videotaped the, I want to thank you, because, um, it's unfortunate, I, I gotta imagine if that tape didn't exist, um, I'm, I'm sure you would've been charged with a felony, for sure. And, and the corrupt cops back there, and the gentleman, I don't know his name, but you asked if he was remorseful, and he clearly said, nope. He, he didn't think I seen that, I seen that. So, he's, he is a, he is a corrupt piece of crap cop. He does not belong on our force, and he needs to be removed. So, I'm gonna put that on the record, and I'm going to, until I lose this seat, every single day, I'm gonna make sure you lose your job at this force. You don't belong here. And it's a shame, it's a shame that we have a policy, at least I thought they had a policy, that they had to wear a body cam. So, I would like to know why they didn't have a body cam, and, to your point, um, sir, how many times do they do this in the course of a week? And, and innocent people are targeted, and I don't care if 17 people were shot, that has nothing to do, not everybody is guilty, and you can't treat everybody as guilty, everybody has rights. And just because there's a shooting, doesn't mean I lose my gun rights, you don't lose your First Amendment rights, has nothing to do with that. You can't be indiscriminately spraying people, because somebody was shot three days ago, that's not the way it works, that's not the way this country works. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, again, thank you all for being here, thank you for being engaged in the process, and I'm sorry, earlier tonight, I wanted to say, but I got, I got so emotional, because this is serious, it's serious. And I did write about this on Facebook twice, this past weekend, because I was so upset. But I want to say to the family, I am so sorry that that happened, it shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened. You're right. Everyone down there that night, their rights were violated. And yes, it was racism. Not only was it, it was an abuse of power, but it was racism. Spraying individuals with mace, with pepper spray. Whatever it was, spraying them. It'll take you back, take you back to, back in the day where they used to take the water hose and spray black people. Like we're animals. We're not animals. I'm appalled. But this isn't the first incident that I've seen whereas the police officers have sprayed individuals. Just walk up to them because they're standing on the sidewalk and start spraying them. But not once have the mayor spoke out about this. Not once have the police chief spoke out.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm sorry that you came here to speak your truth, and you were greeted with yet disrespect again. I'm sorry that that happened to you. Deborah, I talked to you a few days afterwards, and you were still coughing, hacking, and trying to get it out of your system. And it's something that's serious. At some point, this is going to be a teachable moment, but it's going to be some things that are going to happen. Your First Amendment was violated. You have a right to peacefully assemble. There is no curfew for adults. You have the right to enjoyment. There wasn't a riot. There wasn't a threat. None of that occurred. And as adults, grown adults, you have the right to peacefully assemble. So, I don't know why you were specifically targeted, but I know there will be investigations going. And then there's other resources to where you're going outside of it with your attorney in addition. Because this is where it shouldn't happen. Whether it's water hoses or whether it's mace, it's telling you we are in control. It's telling you you're not wanted. And that's not proper training. That shouldn't have happened. Speaking to the PFI, the pending further investigations, where they can hold you up to 48 hours without having any charges. Unless, then they can hold you up to 72 if they're going to question you. It's being done over and over and over and over again. And I could tell it to you, I probably told it to you, and I was half sleepy when what would happen. It's got to stop. You have to speak out because you're not the only ones. You have the voice that you came forward to speak out about it. You shouldn't have been in jail for barbecuing with some tongs. If you're gonna barbecue, I hope you got some utensils and some barbecue sandals. I'm sorry that happened to you. I'm sorry. All right now, so I want to, I will be, and I'm following up every day with Chief Green. Every day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
So, the reason why I didn't comment earlier is because I haven't seen the video. I haven't read any of the articles. I was out of town all weekend. All I've heard about it is what I've heard tonight. So, I am not making a decision. I don't know who's right. I don't know who's wrong. I frankly am gonna let the investigation play out. And I'm not taking sides one way or the other. If you don't like it, that's fine. That's fine.
No back and forth with the audience.
But this is how I am.
Please pause the time. Because you are new, you don't understand how this works. I'm chairing the meeting. My job is to keep the meeting in order. So, when I speak, I'm in order. When you speak, you are currently out of order. Please continue.
I yelled.
All right. Anybody else who wishes to speak during public speaking?
Madam Chair.
Did you ask for the floor?
Please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And so, Ms. Darrell, I heard what you said, and I know with all due respect, it's not about who's speaking, but who's acting. And so, a lot of people may say a lot of things here, but it's all about getting down to the results. And one thing that folks know about me is that when I lock in, I lock in. When I say I support you, I support you. Leon III, you have plenty of press conferences here. You know what I'm saying? You are the native son. I support you. The full trucks, clearly I support you. The family, I support. We need to make sure, Madam Chair, can we bring them to order? I mean, I heard Mr. Woodson talking and the people behind him.
Mr. Woodson, Mr. Woodson, Mr. Woodson, stop hollering out. Stop hollering out, Mr. Woodson. I didn't even give you a warning, but you got one now. That's your first one. Go ahead.
This is sad. I mean, as people giggle, and under these conditions, we do our job, but that's fine. This political theater is not what gets you results. So, we want to make sure that you all get the results. So, as you hear people say what they're gonna do and stuff make you feel good, we need to make sure that it's some bite behind that. We need to make sure that people are working behind the scene with investigations. I heard that the lady say that she doesn't have, we don't have internal affairs. We do have internal affairs within the police department. We have Deborah. So, we have... Again, see, just be in order. We're handling serious business. This is horrible. But anyway, let's make sure that individuals are acting and not just speaking. Because I heard the councilwoman say that this happens all the time. Well, why is it happening all the time if she know about it? When people that, when we had an issue...
Request information. Which council person are you talking about?
The one that said it. And so, as we continue to move, when we had...
You're taking the floor, and I've not acknowledged your request yet. Yes. Yes.
Is it the one in the sixth ward or fifth ward?
The one that said it.
All right, continue.
Thank you. And so, when we saw that we had a fire safety issue, we tapped it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
Thank you. I don't often do speaking during this public response. What I will say is all of the instances, or any instance that is experienced, as I understand, to have been experienced over the weekend, is not just unfortunate. It's unacceptable. The other thing I will say is, young man, certainly, if you want to have conversation with me, we'll coordinate that. I'm wanting to hear more about you and your story outside of this incident. Because there is a person there that that I would rather know about outside of what happened. I'm hearing that, and seeing by way of your family's support, that you were and you were not just raised right, but you're supported right. And I want to see what can be gleaned from that and maybe even replicated in some way or another, or supported in a way in which I can. So, I'll make sure you get information for me to contact me.
Thank you. I think that was everyone during public speaking, so I will go ahead and take my time. I need to clear up two things that y'all can run the tape back on, on both. First of all, Mr. Woodson, I didn't call anything unprecedented, didn't say anything like that. But I understand that you are so upset when you hear the name Sheldon Neely that you tend to misconstrue things and can't hear straight. At no point in time did I say anything was unprecedented. Wasn't me, didn't happen. My second thing, to the lady who's calling me names because she said I didn't speak on it, run the tape back. When I talked about police training, I spoke directly to the family. The family even clapped. So, to say I didn't speak on it, or I just washed over it or ignored it, that did not happen. I spoke on the fact that if there was training, more training, if there was hands-on, in-person training, that stuff like this, what happened to this family, would not have happened, and it should not have happened. I spoke directly to them. I took my time during police training for that purpose because the police do need training when you have situations like that that arise. So, the name-calling and all of that, it was unnecessary. It was rude. It was disrespectful, and you were wrong. That's not my fault. She came up here accusing me of, saying I didn't do something that I did, so that's not my fault. So, as we move on to our agenda item.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I will be leaving this meeting. I have to take my mom for surgery in the morning.
We need to... One, two, three, four, five. We don't have five anymore. All right, we don't have more.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I will stay. I don't know why she's leaving, but I'll go ahead and tough it out. I'll go ahead and stay. I'll go ahead and stay.
All right. So, I will entertain a motion for this meeting.
To adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there support? It's been moved and properly supported. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Excuse me, if y'all could just stay for a second. Yep. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter's not in. Ms. Burns? Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared is not in. Sarah Alamin is not in. Vote is five yes, zero no? Vote is five yes, zero no. The time is 10:12 PM. I officially call this legislative committee meeting to... Colleen's gonna be mad. Colleen is going to be mad.